A quorum of 25 voters being present. I call this session of annual town meeting to order to resume the warrant from last week. Thank you all for rejoining me. I know I had a lot of fun in five hours last week, and I hope you all did too. Just a quick note, because we don't typically have a second night, we are still in session from last week. Although it's been several days, it's effectively the same as if we had taken a 10-minute recess, no different. All the rules and procedure that we followed last week, that I announced last week, are still in force, and we will continue on from where we left off, which is Article 13, if I'm not mistaken. You'll notice that you have three more cards despite our attempt to be green in this community. We had to come up with new color cards for tonight lest there be any issues with voter fraud. We'll be voting with the fluorescent green card, and we'll be talking about the white and blue cards momentarily.
Mr. Moderator, can I please ask why Article 22, which was supposed to be tonight, based on what you said, managed to leapfrog over nine articles and be discussed at 11:30 last night when people were filing out of this room? Imminent domain of taking of land is a very serious, serious article.
You asked a question. Allow me to answer it, please.
Let me just finish, please.
You are done.
I am going to finish.
Ms. Nardone, you are going to stop right now. You asked a question as to why the article was taken out of order.
Okay.
That's a valid question. I'm happy to answer the question.
Okay.
But you have to allow me to do so.
Okay.
Article 22, 22, was taken out of order. What I said at that point in time is that I will only take an article out of order if there's compelling reason to do so. After a discussion on solar, which had some impact on the folks on House Street, it was brought to my attention that resolving that for the benefit of the residents of House Street might be a good thing to do. I felt that was compelling enough to allow town meeting to vote on whether to bring the article forward. A motion was made, properly seconded, to bring that article forward. Town meeting voted overwhelmingly to do so. The article was then brought forward and voted.
The problem is that those neighbors did not have a public hearing. Imminent domain, we have lost millions of dollars on botched imminent domain takings.
Ms. Nardone, there are no issues. If you have an issue with the legal nature of the article, I encourage you, I encourage you to contact the Attorney General.
Well, I will, but you told us.
Please do so, and would you please take your seat?
You gave us your word.
Article 13, to see if the town will elect a member to the Ashland Redevelopment Authority, pursuant to Chapter 340, Section 2 of the Town of Ashland Code, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. The mission of the Ashland Redevelopment Authority is to create opportunities to attract and sustain economic development that will revitalize Ashland's economy and cultural growth. The end goal is to realize a community that is more attractive and self-sufficient. The ARA is governed by a five-member board. Four of those members are elected by town meeting, and one is appointed by the governor. Each member serves a five-year term with one member's term expiring each year. We are holding an actual election here this evening. Town meeting will choose one person from among those nominated to serve a five-year term through May 2020, and one person to serve a one-year unexpired term through May 2016. I will first open the floor to nominations, not quite yet. Anyone wishing to be considered for election to the ARA Board must be nominated. Self-nomination is allowable. Each nomination must also be seconded. Once I close the floor for nominations, no further nominations may be made. After nominations close, I will ask each nominated to proceed to one of the microphones, introduce him or herself, and speak briefly as to why they should be elected. At the conclusion of these speeches, we will hold an election. Because there are two terms, and to make this as clear as possible, we're going to treat this effectively as two separate articles. First, we will deal with a five-year term. So I'd like to open the floor to nominations for the five-year term to expire May 2020. Are there any such nominations? Mr. DeSoni.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This one?
Mark, could you, before you start, folks up in the crowd, but these mics are not real high tonight. Can we get the volume up on them, please? I can't hear Mark with the mic, let alone without it. Mark, you want to give me a test in there?
Testing, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mark, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to dive into the deep end and say I'm nominating myself.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mark DeSoni to serve a five-year term on the Ashland Redevelopment Authority for a term to enter, to end in May of 2020. Is there a second of that nomination?
There is.
There is a second. Are there additional nominations for that position? I'm only hesitating because I see people standing. I will, I'm about to close the floor for nominations. Sorry, something's falling. Seeing no further nominations, the nominations are closed. I'm going to hold on to that nomination for a moment and move to, actually, let me not do that. Mark, if you please come to the microphone and briefly speak as to why you should be elected.
Okay. Why I should be elected. To me, this is to say, this is helping to go, make the town go forward, to understand that redevelopment can be a team effort for everybody, and hoping that I can be a regular citizen that will have a chance to understand and make the other people who don't come out from these meetings and committees, and I can be there face-to-face and understand with them what they want, and bring back to the committee members to go forward with. And I'm covering for the moderator right now.
Sorry, I missed the good part, Mark. I needed to confer with council.
I'm all set.
I'm sure you said everything wonderful. Thank you very much. I apologize for not giving my attention. Okay. At this point, since we have only one nominee for the open seat, I'm going to dispense with the formal voting process.
Terry Hendricks, 20 Ramblewood. Is this just, I thought this was just for the five-year seat?
This is just for the five-year seat.
Okay, all right.
Have you closed the nominations? Is that the idea?
I closed them previously, yes, before.
All right, I was going to say something in favor of what we're trying to do with the Redevelopment Authority.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Sarah Hines, Redevelopment Authority. I was just going to speak about some of the things that we're working on or trying to get to happen in this town and are getting to happen in this town to see if we can get other people interested. But if we're to close, I'm like, it's all right.
Nominations have been opened and closed. We have one candidate. What I've done in the past, at this point, is proceed to ask town meeting for a secret ballot. When we have multiple candidates, seeing only one candidate, I'm going to dispense with the formal voting process and ask all those in favor of Mark DeSoni for the five-year seat to raise your green cards. Thank you. And those opposed. Mark, you got everybody. Congratulations. And now, as if it's Groundhog Day, we're going to go back and do this all over again. Let me open the nominations for the one-year term to expire one year hence. Any nominations?
Yes, Terry Hendricks, 20 Ramblewood Drive. I nominate John Featherston, 98 Heritage Avenue.
Thank you. Is there a second? Are there additional nominations? Cricket seemed to be the operative word tonight. I'm giving fair warning about the closed nominations. Seeing no movement, I will close nominations. We have a nomination made in second for the one-year term. Mr. Featherston, will you please approach? And speak briefly, yet mightily.
Briefly, but mightily. Me? Please. Good evening, John Featherston, 98 Heritage Avenue. As a former selectman, chairman of the Metro West Growth Committee, Metro West Regional Collaborative, a member of MAPC, and many of my former colleagues sitting in the Governor Baker's administration, I think I would be an asset to the board, and we could get something done. I've always been very conscious about the way the town looks, and any contribution I can make to that, I will look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Featherston. Since there is only one nominee for this spot, I will again dispense with the formality of a vote and ask all those in favor of John Featherston for a one-year term in the ARA expiring May 2016 to raise your green cards. Thank you very much. And opposed. Two for two on unanimous votes. On to Article 14. I mentioned, my notes say I mentioned earlier this evening, but clearly it was earlier about five hours ago last week, that, and I mentioned in my opening comments, we're going to be trying some new things to help move town meeting along. We see how well that worked, while still allowing for a healthy discussion. One of them is coming up right now. To facilitate town meeting this year, the Board of Selectmen, working with the moderator and Finance Committee, has combined what used to be a number of different articles into a single, single article to be acted upon collectively, that is by single vote. This is very common in other towns, and is generally referred to by town meeting as the Town Meeting Consent Agenda. Articles included in the consent agenda here in Ashland are those that tend not to change from year to year or are routine in nature and have been approved by unanimous or near-unanimous votes in prior town meetings, are straightforward and fully explained in the warrant language as presented, or are housekeeping in nature, those which require town meeting action but do not represent a change in policy for the town, and those in which the dollar amounts are about the same or less than in prior years. There are two consent articles this evening. The first deals with general town matters, while the second deals exclusively with matters relating, relating to the comprehensive CPA. My page ended, I apologize. Typically, these are brought forward, not read, voted, and done. Because we're doing this for the first time, I will give a brief oversight onto these articles. So Article 14, the annual consent article general. To see if the town will vote the following consent articles. One, grant program authorization, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and/or the town manager to apply for, accept, and enter into contracts from time to time for the expenditure of any funds allotted to Ashland by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the U.S. government under any state or federal grant program. Two, road contracts, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with the Massachusetts Highway Department Commissioner or the federal government for the construction and maintenance of public highways in the Town of Ashland for the ensuing year. Three, contracts in excess of three years, to see if the town will vote in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 30B, Section 12B, to authorize the town manager or the superintendent of schools to solicit and award contracts for terms exceeding three years, including any renewal, extension, or option, provided in each instance, the longer term is determined to be in the best interest of the town by a vote of the Board of Selectmen or the school committee as appropriate. Four, establish revolving funds, to see if the town will vote to establish the following revolving funds in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2. Council on Aging, not to exceed 25,000. Community Center Rental and Maintenance Fund, not to exceed 25,000. Animal Control Revolving Account, not to exceed 38,000. Library Materials Replacement Fund, not to exceed 1,500. Hazardous Waste Revolving Fund, not to exceed 15,000. Planning Board, not to exceed 50,000. High School Guidance Department, not to exceed 40,000. Food Establishment Programs, not to exceed 20,000. And Tobacco Control Programs, not to exceed $5,000, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote to approve Article 14 as written in the warrant. Given the routine nature of the items contained within consent articles, they are normally voted without discussion. As such, I will ask for a motion and then move directly to a vote. I entertain a motion that consent Article 14 be approved as printed in the warrant. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Moderator, a point of order?
Sir?
After reviewing Chapter 44, 53E and 1/2, I do not believe that revolving funds can be aggregated into a single article due to what they require as reporting to the town meeting legislative body.
Okay, well, in a moment, I'll ask council to opine on that, but our practice in the past has been to approve all revolving funds within the same article. But I will let council address that since it's a legal matter. Counsel?
So long as the revolving funds are set out separately, they can be all addressed in a single article, as opposed to what we're about to do with the CPA, and we're going to do that separately. So they can all be voted on in a single article, so long as they're set out separately.
Do I have your permission to refer to the article directly, excuse me, the general law directly, so that I can read where my objection comes from?
If you like, absolutely. I mean, if there's a legal issue, let's get it right.
Okay. According to 53E and 1/2, the expenditures shall not be made or liabilities incurred for any such revolving fund in excess of the balance of the fund nor in excess of the total authorized expenditures of such fund. We have no information on the balances nor any excess in the revolving funds at the current time. Secondly, no revolving fund may be established if an aggregate limit of all total revolving funds authorized under this section exceeds 10% of the amount raised by taxation by the city or town in the most recent fiscal year for which the tax rate has been certified under Section 23 of Chapter 59. No revolving fund expenditures shall be made for the purposes of paying any wages, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That is not as germane as the next section, which is, "Such authorization shall be made annually prior to each respective fiscal year, provided, however, that each authorization for revolving funds shall specify the programs and purposes, the departmental receipts which shall be credited to the fund, the board, department, or officer authorized to expend the fund, the limit on the total amount which may be expended from such fund in the ensuing year, and provided further that no board, department, or officer shall be authorized to expend in any one fiscal year from all revolving funds under its direct control more than 1% of the amount raised by taxation by the city and town in the most recent fiscal year for which a tax rate has been certified." I say to you additionally that the board or department or officer having charge of such revolving funds shall report to the annual, the annual town meeting, or et cetera, et cetera, the total amount of receipts and expenditures for each revolving fund under its control for the prior fiscal year and for the current fiscal year through December 31st. We have not received any of this information, neither in writing in the town budget nor here at the town meeting. I tell you, as far as I'm concerned, you cannot vote these funds, you cannot vote these accounts until all this information is provided to town meeting.
Okay, well, what I will do in a moment is ask council for her opinion, and I'm not making an excuse or a promise, other than the fact that we have done this for many, many years. That does not excuse it if it's wrong, but I just want to be clear that this is not a change in past, from past practice. Counsel?
So, first of all, the original answer was, can they be voted in one article? And the answer is, yes, they can be voted in one article. Nothing that you read, Mr. Ingram, indicated they couldn't be voted in one article. They are set out separately. They do set the limits. They say specifically who can spend the money, and how much they can spend, and what the authorization is. And I believe you asked, Mr. Herbert, he can tell you what the percentage is based upon the...
In material of what Mr. Herbert has to say, unless he has it documented, that he can present in front of this town meeting, because it states that this is supposed to be presented to the town meeting. And that's, how much is in, was the beginning balance? How much is being taken in? How much was spent? How much is the ending balance? Who has authorization for it, and who, and how many revolving accounts do they have authorization for, insofar as they're not allowed to spend more than 1% of the town tax levy across all of the revolving accounts that they have authorization for? We do not have that information.
Counsel?
Actually, if you read the beginning of the paragraph...
Could you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
Which paragraph? About to say that, Mr. Ingram. It would be the third paragraph of Section 53E and 1/2 that requires that report to be made to the Board of Selectmen upon recommendation of the Board of Selectmen. Revolving fund establishment provisions in section shall be a vote by annual town meeting upon recommendation of Board of Selectmen, and then in any other, and that refers to other city or town.
So counsel, in your opinion, is there anything, are we okay to move forward with this article?
According to my, according to my copy from the state site, the board, department, or officer having charge of such revolving fund shall report to the annual town meeting, or the city council, or the Board of Selectmen, or the mayor of a city, or city manager in a planning city, or any other city, town, or legislative body, and the chief administrator and/or executive officer.
I'm going to interrupt for a second. If I heard you write, you said that must report to town meeting or the Board of Selectmen. Is that what you read?
It, it's all predicated on what type of government you have. In this case, the legislative body of the Town of Ashland is the town meeting, and they are the ones who receive the report.
Okay. Well, I'm paid for my good looks, not my legal opinions, so I'm going to let counsel have the final word on this one. Counsel, are we good to vote on this, or no?
I believe the article is of sufficient form.
Okay, then we are, we'll move forward with the article.
Then I request, Mr. Moderator, that your counsel provide me with who I need to report this to in order to have it looked at and certified after the fact, so that we don't have any disputes going forward.
That would be the Attorney General. I can't be, I don't mean to be a flit, that's the answer. I don't have a specific answer.
No, I understand, I understand it's going to be a flit.
Another point of order. Mr. Moderator, may I please ask why we're being denied our ability to comment on an article at a Democratic town meeting? Why is this being shut down like there's some weird thing going on here? Where's the openness? I would like to comment on, on this, on these annual consent articles. What's going on with this town meeting and people? We should be upset that we're being shut down!
Thank you, Ms. Nardone. Sir?
Yeah, I was going to wait until the end when we're done with the vote to basically gut the committee I'm a chair of. I was talking to people who sat around me. This, people here work, and I don't want to be here until 1 o'clock in the morning again. Like, I, no, you make a good opinion, but we need to figure out a way to do this effectively and not make this a three-person show that goes on for hours.
Sir, excuse me, folks, allow me to run the town meeting, and that's what I was elected to do. Is it a point of order or point of information, Mr. Hannah?
Well, it's nice to know that I'm one of the three people.
Is this a point of order or a point of information, Mr. Hannah?
I'll take it any way I can get it. I have in my hands a document that these people are all searching for.
Mr. Hannah, is this a point of order or a point of information? Just yes or, yes or no?
Information, of course, in support of the article.
Okay, then please make your point of information.
I try and do. Just let me do it.
Get there.
You want me to hurry?
I always want you to hurry.
That's why I slow.
Does everyone else in this room?
Adam, anytime you tell me to do something, I slow right down. You know that.
Mr. Hannah?
Okay, what we have here, and I have here, is all, all the year revolving accounts in the Town of Ashland. And they've got before, before 2012, during 2012, and after 2012. I have one for the town government, and I have one for the school committee. And it tells you exactly how much money is in it, how much money has been spent, and what's the remaining balance. The only problem is they never show it to the people. It has never been in the town warrant as long as I've been around here, and believe me, that's a while. And so, all I suggest that you do is have this document printed every day, because the Finance Committee and the town manager find ways of drawing money out of that account when they have to balance the budget.
Okay, you've made, you've gone way past the point of information.
No, no, I'm just showing you what you do with the money when you don't...
You've gone past the point of information.
Thank you. I love it when you say that. Okay, thank you very much.
So on the motion made in seconded, all those in favor of approving consent Article 14 as printed in the warrant, please raise your green cards. Sorry, this requires a majority. Thank you. Opposed. That passes. Article 15, the annual consent article, Community Preservation Act, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee, to see if the town will vote the following consent articles. One, adjust fiscal year 2015 CPA appropriation, to see if the town will vote to adjust the dollar amounts previously set aside in FY15 in order to accurately reflect the increased state match of 40.13% the town received. The additional monies are to be transferred from the fund balance and distributed as follows: Undesignated Budgeted Reserve Account, 105,000. Open Space Account, 15,000. Historic Reserves Account, 15,000. Pardon me. Community Housing Account, 15,000. Two, Community Preservation Funds, FY16 Annual Appropriations, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2016, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Appropriations from FY2016 estimated revenues to community committee administrative expense, 90,000, $50,932. Reserves from FY2016 estimated revenues to historic resources reserve, 1,865, to community housing reserve, 1,01,865. From open space reserve, 1,01,865. To undesignated budgeted reserve, 662,125. Three, community preservation funds for the Oak Street bond payment to appropriate 205,625. Four, community preservation funds, high school athletic fields bond payment to appropriate Five, community preservation funds, Warren Woods bond payment to appropriate 186,875, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Community Preservation Committee recommends the town so vote to approve Article 15 as written in the warrant. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote to approve Article 15 as written in the warrant. Consistent with the last article, I will accept the motion in second and then move to vote. I'll entertain a motion that consent Article 15 be approved as printed in the warrant as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Do I have such a motion? Is, thank you. All in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. Opposed. And that passes unanimously. Article 16, annual authorization article, and before someone asks the very obvious question why this wasn't included in Article 14, it's because it requires a two-thirds To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the school committee to grant easements for access, water, drainage, sewer, and utility purposes on terms and conditions the board and the committee deem in the best interest of the town, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote in favor of the annual authorization Article 16. This is an annual article that allows the Board of Selectmen and school committee to more efficiently conduct certain business by granting them the authority to do so without having to obtain the approval of town meeting. I will entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen and the school committee be authorized to grant easements for access, water, drainage, sewer, and utility purposes on terms and conditions the board and committee deem in the best interest of the town. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Because it requires two-thirds as ready discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Opposed. That passes, but not unanimously. Article 17, supplemental connection to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will, will vote to apply for admission to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority water system, to receive from Massachusetts Water Resources Authority a supplemental public water supply for the Town of Ashland in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Acts of 1984 of the Commonwealth, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen acting as water commissioners to take such action necessary or required to apply for admission to and receive a supplemental public water supply for the Town of Ashland by Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, including without limitation in filing legislation, payments of applicable fees and charges, and entering into an agreement with the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority as may be required or necessary to receive a supply of water and prevailing rates charged by the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority to communities in its water supply system, or to take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Voting the affirmative gives authority to the Board of Selectmen to begin the application process for a connection to the MWRA for a supplemental water supply. This step is the first of a multi-step process before completing the connection. A future connection could give the town options and control of its water supply during periods of low reservoir levels. This step is a good faith effort to satisfy the DEPs and Mass. Water Resources Directive for Ashland to move towards solving its water supply deficiency. This application step does not result in any immediate expenditure of funds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please indulge me for a few moments, if you would, to allow me to give a brief explanation of Article 17, we got in the supplemental connection to the MWRA. Although the title of this article is the same... is the same as the one that was presented at our special town meeting in November, the purpose, if passed, is much different. We're asking this community to vote on tonight with this article whether or not the community wants to consider joining the MWRA in what they call a partial community tie-in, and join the six to seven other communities that currently have the same distinction. The passage of this article does not, and I repeat, does not, result in the expending of any money to begin construction of such a connection. The passage will simply signal to the town that there is a desire to put time, effort into developing a policy around how the connection would be made, how it will be used, and when would it be used, and who would make that decision, and also develop a financial plan to build such a connection. Both of these actions would require significant community input, dialogue, along with a town meeting vote before any actual connection could be or would be built. This article is simply the first step of many, but also an important one from our standpoint, and that is to signal to the Department of Environmental Protection and to the MWRA that we should, in the future, need to get a declaration of water supply emergency tie-in, similar to the one we did in 2007, and again, as we did in 2013, that we have heeded their direction and their requirement to make plans to address our supply deficiencies specifically related to the MWRA criteria. When determining to allow an emergency connection, the community has developed the long-term plans to remedy such deficiencies, which, from the town's perspective and the MWRA's, is a solution set things and done to have done, such as improve water conservation, like the proposed Article 18, new local and regional supplies of water, and the application to the MWRA for water needs beyond our feasible and local resources. Thank you for your undivided attention. At this time, Mr. David Menugian will now provide a presentation with the additional details of the work that has taken place since November, including looking at the local resources, and also talking with several partial MWRA water communities regarding how they use their supplemental connection, where does this control lie, and explain that there are zero quality water issues to these communities. Mr. Menugian?
Thank you, Mr. Mignani. Mr. Moderator, a brief presentation. Next slide, please. Just want to speak very briefly about where we've gone to date and what we learned from last town meeting and how we'd like to move forward. Next slide, please. As many people know, we have five wells serving the town. They also are a partial supply for Hopkinton. They're tied very closely to the Hopkinton Reservoir. I have here some statistics of what we used pumped out of the ground in 2013 and 14, what was sold to Hopkinton, and the amount that was metered as irrigation water, just for informational purposes. Next slide. This graph shows our research over seven years of the elevation of the Hopkinton Reservoir, which regulates how we can draw water out of our wells. And then, the bars show the quantity of water we used on a monthly basis during those seven years. Broadly speaking, on a monthly basis, the bars don't have a lot of variability. We've seen more water used as the town has grown, but the trends from month to month are somewhat consistent. However, if you look at the line chart from year to year, the reservoir levels vary dramatically. So, our ability to take water from our wells varies dramatically while our needs stay consistent, and that's one of the key issues with our current water supply. As many people know, we had an emergency connection in 2007 and 2013. The Department of Environmental Protection, in their emergency declaration, required that we come up with a long-term strategy to remedy our supply deficiencies. Haley and Ward is our water and sewer consultant. They developed a plan that looked at a number of different solutions to improve and increase capacity at our existing water treatment plant on Howe Street, to build additional wells in town, and then to connect to the MWRA. Next slide. When we now look at our future solutions, we also need to keep in mind upcoming regulations from the state, which are going to regulate how we can draw water out of our public water supplies. It's called the Sustainable Watershed Management Initiative, or SWIMMY. It codifies allocations under the state's Water Management Act. It's going to have new additional requirements that will impose more restrictions on how towns like Ashland use their water. Some of these requirements includes safe yield determined by watershed basin, seasonal stream flow criteria, and I'll just stop briefly here. As an example regarding stream flow, the Hopkinton Reservoir has a pre-existing stream flow requirement, which says that the beach downstream of the reservoir is allowed on a daily basis to flush out the beach, and then that water runs downstream. That is a pre-existing condition that will need to go on regardless of our water needs. Those folks have a right to that water, and they'll continue to have that right. Biological categories will now be considered, the withdrawal levels of groundwater, and then seasonal adjustments during the course of the year. Third piece of that is a withdrawal baseline. Generally, they're going to look about 10 years back and see what our use was 10 years ago, and then apply a multiplication factor to come up with a value that they feel will be appropriate for us now. I want to note that between 2000 and 2010, Ashland was the largest growing town in the Metro West area. So, we are going to struggle to be consistent with what they believe is an appropriate baseline for us. These regulations will guide the DEP permitting of all of our wells in town under the Water Management Act. Those permits are due in... will be... New permits will be in place in August of 2016, so about 15 months from now. At the last town meeting, we got a lot of feedback from the residents, a lot of concerns. Some of them had to do with how we were proposing to fund it, and a lot of questions that still remained. There were questions on how the water, if we got this connection, would be managed. There were questions regarding the viability of Spring Street, and also the status of our current intermunicipal agreement with Hopkinton. Next slide. Since that time, we've also reached out to a number of the other towns, and I think Mr. Mignani mentioned, partial communities, to see how they use MWRA water. Their needs vary anywhere from 5% to approximately 85% of their total water use, and generally, the towns do the following. They maximize their local sources per the DEP permits that they have. They set their water policy. In Ashland, our water policy is set by our water bylaws, and our water bylaws are set by town meeting. Public Works cannot decide policy on when to use sources of water, or when to use water based on the needs of the town. The board of selectmen can't. It's set based on our water bylaws, which is set by town meeting. What Public Works or the water commissioners do are implement those bylaws, implement those policies. We use our water sources, however they're available, to implement those policies. If people want to see sources, if people want to change policies, that is done by the people at town meeting. Thank you. Next slide. So, we looked at Spring Street, and to compare apples to apples, we got an estimate from our engineers of what it would take to get it to where the MWRA proposal is right now, so that we would have a viable option that we could start permitting and develop as a source. So, this cost here, just like the MWRA cost, does not include actual construction. There are still issues regarding Spring Street. We have no access to the property. It would require a new MEPA review, and there are still quality concerns. As has been said, just want to reiterate that our proposal here is to determine the steps and take the actions to join the MWRA. We are not proposing any kind of construction at this point. We've also... Public Works has been working closely with the Sustainability Committee to develop changes to our water bylaw, because that was a concern coming out of last town meeting, to promote additional conservation, conversation about conservation, and we've been working on the intermunicipal agreement with Hopkinton to update that, to get it ready for the next period of review, which will be coming up soon. Thank you. If we move forward, we would be submitting an environmental notification form to the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act process, which is a process for a number of state agencies to review our permit. The MWRA has offered to provide us examples and work with us so that this work could be done without any costs of hiring consultants. We would then consider submission of a formal application to join the MWRA, and then come to a discussion, come to an agreement on how we would like to move forward with an entrance fee, finalizing the entrance fees. Thank you. Next slide. And any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Menugian. Thank you, Mr. Mignani. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the board of selectmen shall be authorized to apply for admission to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority Water System, to receive from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority a supplemental public water supply for the town of Ashland in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Acts of 1984 of the Commonwealth, and to further authorize the board of selectmen acting as water commissioners to take such action necessary or required to apply for admission to and receive a supplemental public water supply for the town of Ashland from Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, including without limitation filing legislation, payments of applicable fees and charges, and entering into an agreement with the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority as may be required or necessary to receive a supply of water at prevailing rates charged by the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority to communities in its water supply system. Do I have such a motion? Is there a second? Discussion. Mr. Hanna?
Okay, I'll take it. I am a supporter of the Spring Street well. And the reason why I am is because I've been involved in the Spring Street well since 1993. I was on the board of appeals at that time, and we had to go through the review of the entire system. We have all the maps, we have the design, we have everything except someone who checked the water decided it wasn't quality water. So, they sued the company that was making it non-qualified, and Ashland went into a, let's see, it'd be about a 15-year period of time where the federal government, state government, and federal government tested that well four times a year, 25 test points, and five well sites. And after 24 years, Ashland got a letter that said, "Dear Sirs, you are now given permission by DEP to utilize that site as a water source for your system." And we had already put in about $1.8 million worth of pipes, hydrants, and everything was always there until it failed its quality. But they said, "Now you may use it for water." So, what did we do? We sat on our heels, and we sat. And then they cautioned us. The longer you sit, the more new tests you have to take. But you're still approved. Well, now it's going on eight years, and we still haven't decided to use it, and refuse to test it. If we just put a crew down there, we wasted $500,000 trying to get the shore pumping station to look good, and it didn't. We all paid that. We have paid nothing to invite a test company to come down and test the water to see if it's okay. And they won't do it. They're the government. They haven't done it since then.
Wrap it up, Jimmy, please.
Well, I got... I'm only half through.
That's my concern.
This is very significant, because it's actual, not guesses. It's actual. I'll try and hasten it, Adam, okay? Now, so, Ashland decided to have a meeting of people who wanted to talk about the well site. So, they had a meeting, and they had it at the cellar of the town hall, so all five of us showed up. And we're going to discuss Ashland's history on water.
30 seconds, Jimmy.
There was shell... Well, anyways, it was determined that if you want to go to MWRA, you've got three sources, South Pro, and two in Framingham, and oh, by the way, you've got the Spring Street well. I asked one question. If money is an issue, which one would you go? He said, "The Spring Street well," quote-unquote. So, there's nothing wrong with our program, and the savings is immense, because we own our water. We don't have to buy it before we get it. We have to pay about a half a million, maybe a million dollars to join the club, but today, we're only asking to, can we be a member? Well, that's the fly in the spider. You know, the spider says, "Come on in. You can just be a club member." And then he eats him up. So, please, take into consideration, have a meeting with the interested people, and for God's sake, find out what the prices really are, and see what the financial difference is. Don't just assume it. Thank you.
Mr. Asaveto?
Yes. My issue is that...
Martin, if you would identify yourself, please.
My name is Martin Asaveto, 77 Warren Road, Ashland. This article was presented last November, and it was defeated. So, now, it's coming back because a new bill of health. You are presented to us in the same manner as the daily calls that I get. Senior, you're eligible for a new, get up, I can't get up, system, alarm system. It'll cost you nothing. You have been recommended by your dear neighbors, the board of selectmen. But once I accept that, I get hit with a daily or monthly bill until I can't get up anymore. Okay. So, now, as it was presented, there was a cost to it. I have the... one of the little pieces of paper information was passed. The town is currently looking at the total cost of getting up to 120 million gallons a day as a permanent supplemental source. The total construction and entrance cost for this much water will be approximately $3.7 million. So, this article implies cost. So, it does... it requires more than a simple majority. Now, the next thing that I have is...
Mr. Asaveto, just to clarify, the fact that an article includes an appropriation, which this one does not, would not make it a requirement for a two-thirds majority. A two-thirds majority would only be required if there were borrowing involved. This article contemplates neither borrowing nor expenditure.
To anybody here, it implies cost. Fine, I'll accept your statement. Now, we constantly keep on changing our zoning and planning laws, our zoning laws, and encourage development. There's nothing that says that we cannot take into account unlimited resources of water. We cannot continue building and building and building. So, when are we going to have sufficient water? So, there's nothing anywhere that says that we cannot stop spreading construction and building these multiple dwellings that require a lot of water. So...
Please wrap it up.
Okay. Question from Mr. Menugian, that we have... we pump so many gallons of water into our water system. What's the input? How much do we get out? How many millions of gallons of water are we losing monthly through the leaks in our pipes?
So, just to clarify, you just want to know how much, what we're losing currently?
How much water we're losing through a pipe leakage? That's one of the requirements...
No, I'm just clarifying the question, that's all. You're asking how much we're losing through leakage through the pipes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Menugian?
On an annual basis, Mr. Moderator, we do a report to the DEP on unaccounted-for water. It's a number of different factors...
A little closer to the mic, please.
Oh, sure. It's a number of different factors how we decide what unaccounted-for water is. Primarily in Ashland, unaccounted-for water is a combination of leakage through pipes, as well as meters that are not reading properly. And so, currently, we're in the range of approximately 15% unaccounted-for water. We think half of that are meters that are not reading properly, and the other half is roughly leaks and other issues related to leaks.
So, my question is, approximately, how many millions, gallons of water...
The question was, if we can translate that into gallons.
Okay. So, say, 7% of 400 million gallons would be...
28 million.
...28 million gallons over the course of a year. And that varies depending on usage. It doesn't vary depending on the needs of the town. So, that water is lost based on usage rather than need, if that makes sense?
So, the answer to your question, Mr. Asaveto, is best guess is approximately 28 million gallons is lost per year through leakage of the system.
Yes. Okay, so, isn't it a requirement from the MWRA that we correct our water leakage before? What are we accomplishing by connecting to the MWRA? What are we accomplishing by connecting to the MWRA without correcting the water leakage? How many million gallons? 28 million gallons of water?
Mr. Manugian?
There is not a requirement from the MWRA. There is a requirement from DEP that we're constantly trying to improve or reduce our unaccounted-for water. Another way we do that, Mr. Moderator, is the DEP requires that every other year we do a leak detection on our entire system. In Ashland, we spend the money to do that annually to try to improve our leak detection. And each year, we fix all the leaks that we detect.
Thank you.
So in view of this discrepancy, Mr. Moderator, I move that the question be postponing indefinitely?
I'm not going to accept that motion at this point. There are a lot of people here to have discussion on it. Ma'am?
Okay, so I move the previous question?
I'm not going to accept that motion. There are a lot of people here who wish to have this conversation.
So what are we doing in town meeting?
Having discussion, the 10 people lined up behind you. Ma'am, if you will, please.
So when will my question be considered?
When we get to the end of conversation.
When will my motion be considered?
When we get to...
To postpone indefinitely.
Are you going to allow me to answer?
Yes.
Thank you. I will consider your motion after discussion is complete. Ma'am?
Tricia Kendall, 25 Olive Street. I chair the Sustainability Committee. These issues that we're looking at may seem in contrast to what the Sustainability Committee is all about, but this connection may seem in contrast to our efforts to conserve water. And it may seem in odd, given that the weather that we've had this winter and the extreme amount of snow that may be replenishing our water supplies. But it's important to remember that these water issues are not black and white, they're by no means simple. And any one fact that someone may have does not necessarily point to an obvious answer for this question. The Sustainability Committee has worked and spoken extensively about this issue, talking about it with the town. And we feel that it's also important that we need to sustain ourselves, that we need, the town needs water for our own survival. And so we're in support of this article. But know that the Sustainability Committee continues to work tirelessly toward other methods of conservation, both at home and in the town. We work towards using water from other sources, such as reclaimed rainwater, so that we can reach a point where there is plenty of water from sustainable sources for our homes, our yards, and our gardens. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Catherine Jerzick, 11 Rodman Road. I'm speaking against not supporting this. And basically, I appreciate that people are looking into it. And the way I look at this is we kind of didn't put maybe the homework and effort that I would like to see to feel comfortable voting for this, which would be addressing things of waste. We have leaky pipes, and I've seen no plan to really address that. And I would like to see the same amount of effort given by town government to address those issues. Conservation, I think I've either read in town website or article in paper, the electronic metering, that's a good chunk of money, and we should be fixing those things. And I guess, you know, just to liken this, I relatively new homeowner, and our house had a leak in the roof, coming right down through the chimney. And when I closed, my friend came over and said, "When are we going to paint?" And I thought she was kind of crazy. And I think that's what, you've got to fix the basic stuff before you go beyond that.
Thank you. Ms. Suman?
Roberta Suman, 28 Woodridge Lane. At the last town meeting afterwards and through the public forums, there was considerable input from the community that conservation was going to be key around this decision. So it's uncomfortable for me to think about voting for this one way or the other without seeing an affirmation by this body that, yes, they're willing to make a commitment to conservation or not. And so the order of these articles, to me, is in the wrong order. I think in order to get all the information out on the table so that when we vote on the MWRA application, where, or, you know, the initial paperwork, we know whether we're going to at least also tighten up our conservation and water measures, because I think that that's an integral factor in making this decision. So I would respectfully request that this be tabled, conservation article be taken up, and then we return to this one.
Okay, that would require a motion to table. A motion?
So you want me to do that?
Let me see if I will get the word, if I don't get the words right, please correct it. So if I'm getting this right, you would like to make a motion to table Article 17 until the conclusion of action on Article 18. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I will entertain that motion. Is there a second for that motion? Okay. Let me explain what's happening to make sure everyone understands. There's been a motion made to stop our conversation on this article, move to the next article, which deals with water conservation issues. Are you looking at me for... Okay, good. I thought I did something wrong again. If this motion passes, we will stop talking about Article 17. We will move to 18, proceed through 18 as we normally would, then return to Article 17. If this motion to table fails, we will continue with our conversation of Article 17 as if Ms. Suman had never approached the mic. Is everyone, any...
Point of order?
It required, and this will require a two-thirds vote. A point of order? I can't hear you, Mr. Asaveto. You're going to have to...
I believe I have a motion.
You do have a motion. A motion to table takes precedence of a motion of indefinite postponement.
Can you come to the floor and table?
I'm sorry?
Can you come to the floor and table?
You're going to have to approach the mic. I cannot, I simply cannot hear you from back there.
But I believe I presented a motion to postpone indefinitely.
You did, Mr. Asaveto. And as I tried to explain, that a motion to table takes precedence in hierarchical order over a motion to...
I don't believe so.
Well, I'm sorry, but...
And I present a second motion to move the question?
There is a motion on the table that's been seconded to table the article until the conclusion of Article 17. So that requires a two-thirds vote. Does everyone, does anyone not understand the vote we're about to take? If you don't, please just raise your hand, and I'll explain it.
I don't understand.
You don't understand it? Okay. The, we are discussing Article 17, which relates to the supplemental connection to the MWRA. A point has been made that the subsequent article, Article 18, deals with conservation issues. And it has been suggested that the resolution of Article 18 might help inform votes, the voters, on how to vote on Article 17. This is not my opinion, this is the motion that has been made. Because of that, which is a reasonable proposition, I have accepted a motion to table Article 17 and then go on to discuss Article 18, after which we will come back and conclude discussion on Article 17. If the motion to table is granted, that's what we will do. It requires two-thirds majority. If the motion fails, we will continue on with discussion of Article 17.
Can we go back to our seats?
That's your call. I'm going to take a brief, not a recess, but someone from tech support, apparently there's a big buzzing coming from this speaker down here that is causing a problem. I can't hear it. So if we get somebody down here to take a look at that, please, I would appreciate it. Give me a high sign that somebody heard me. Thank you. So, sorry for that. We have a motion made and seconded to table Article 17 until the conclusion of Article 18. I will start this with a hand count. If I need to tellers, I will bring the tellers down. All those in favor of the motion to table Article 17, please raise your green cards. Thank you. Opposed. Okay, that's a two-thirds majority. We will move on to table Article 17, move to Article 18. You guys keep looking at me.
Well, it's just got better.
It's got better. Thank you. We have now moved to Article 18. Once completed, we will go back to Article 17 as if none of this ever happened. Article 18, amend the town bylaw, water operation sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see, the town will amend Chapter 270, Water Use Restrictions, Section 270-5, Restricted Water Uses, as is printed in the warrant, as is printed in the warrant, period. The Finance Committee defers this recommendation to town meeting. Mr. Monaco?
So the DPW has worked with the Sustainability Committee in reviewing the existing water restrictions that are in place, i.e., as most of us know, the stage one, stage two restrictions, and what's allowed and what's not allowed. So working with, again, the DPW and the Sustainability, they tried to make some suggested changes here to this body to allow certain things and take away other things. And their thought process behind this is, as Roberta was speaking to, a conservation-type measures. So certain things were allowed, and I think we'll let, I think Mr. Manugian is going to speak to some of the details here. But it's looking to add some conservation measures and also give us some other available uses that were not available to date. So, Dave?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just briefly, we made some changes in a couple of primary areas. One has to do with our permanent restrictions, our year-round restrictions. Basically, we're reducing use of municipal water for irrigation from three days a week to two days a week. Then, once restrictions go into place due to the level of the reservoir, i.e. the stage one restrictions, we still allow use of municipal water for irrigation once a week. Then when there are stage two restrictions, we continue to allow irrigation once a week with the caveat that the Selectmen, as the water commissioners, under extreme circumstances could restrict that use further. The second part of this is, we want to implement measures to better identify irrigation use in town. And also to make sure that the customers who are using our water for irrigation are using it in as efficient a manner as possible. So we are recommending over the next few years that a number of steps come into place for those customers who use water for irrigation. They include equipping re-engages and programmable timers on their irrigation systems, and that would be for July of 2016. And then in July of 2017, irrigation system shall have a separate meter and backflow device. That is a brief summary of the changes proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manugian. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that Chapter 270, Water Use Restrictions, Section 270-5, Restricted Water Uses be amended as printed in the warrant. Having a motion made and seconded, we'll move to discussion. Mr. DeSoni.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I said this at the end, a pre-town meeting forum, and I'm going to say it again, nice, short and sweet. We order residents that don't have underground irrigation, single-family houses, regular waterways, water, how it comes into the house, goes out, whatever, saying, "It's about time the playing field gets even for what comes down the road."
Sir?
Wayne Bates, 66, Strobus Lane, a member of the Sustainability Committee. And my background is water and wastewater and working with the Public Works and Water Department on some of these changes. And just to kind of give a brief overview of what Sustainability has been looking at and will continue to look at, because conservation, this isn't the last time we'll see a change to the conservation regulations, because essentially, we're in, we have issues with water, as we know. And we've tabled one item that we'll get back to, but we have a sole source of water. And our water relies on two things, mother nature and human nature. And those two things don't always line up. And we don't get rain when we need the water, we have water when we don't need the water. And we need to put in policies that conserve. And when we first started meeting with Sustainability, we were approached by residents with a long list of conservation measures that, you know, there were too many to come to the first town meeting as a committee with recommendations, but they're still on our list of things to accomplish from a standpoint of conserving. And it's very important that we feel as though these are really important, to measure irrigation, to have the systems that are capable of measuring rain. Nobody gets more frustrated than me, and I'm sure many people here, out when it's raining and seeing an irrigation system watering a lawn. It's crazy. So these are things that, you know, we're trying to put in place. Now, putting them in a policy that nobody knows exists and they don't read comes to enforcement. And DPW and Water has been doing more enforcement on the policies and for conservation and handing out citations for people. But, you know, I mean, that's the human nature side of this issue. It's an education issue that needs to happen. These are just the first step in conservation. But in the end, we cannot rely on one source. We had, I don't know if people remember Thanksgiving last year, the water department chased a leak for several days. We lost a lot of water, cost a lot of money, and we were in a, we were in a place where, without the backup water supply, we're in trouble. And we can talk more about that in the next article. But that, those are the issues. And we have a great water superintendent and a very, a very good DPW director that are, they're stepping up the leak detection. The regulation says every two years they're doing every year, and that's a big deal. I mean, finding those leaks and getting on them is a big deal. And one other thing, just on unaccounted-for water, that's a misnomer. It's really non-revenue water. We lose water naturally by treatment, so not every gallon that we pull out of the ground goes to a home. We have to filter it, we have to treat it, we have to backwash filters, we waste water. We flush hydrants to get iron and manganese out of the lines, keep them clean. You know, so there's a lot of non-revenue water that is accounted for. It's not waste, it's accounted for, it's part of the maintenance of the system. So I just wanted to kind of make that point. But this is not the last you'll see of conservation measures, at least from the Sustainability Committee bringing them forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Mr. Arbaitman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joel Arbaitman, Woodridge Lane. When Stoughton hooked up to the MWRA, they experienced a 30% increase in per capita usage. So I have a couple of questions for Mr. Manugian. One is, is there any way to quantify how much, or how much gallonage, or what impact he expects the proposed conservation measures to have, and how it might affect possible increases by connecting to a larger supply of water?
Mr. Manugian?
Mr. Moderator, as it is right now, if we joined up under the current policies that we have, use of water is regulated by the levels of the Ashland Reservoir, so that regardless of whether we have that MWRA connection, the same restrictions would still be in place.
But I don't think that was the question. The question was, what impact would, no one can guess, be sure, but what would the impact be in water reduction from these regulations? Did I get that close to right?
Very nice.
So if you could address that, please.
How many gallons do we anticipate?
Well, we won't hold you to a number, but a guesstimate, something, a percentage, what you can do. You're the expert in the room, we're looking to you.
So water use is set based on policy. So with these additional restrictions, I think we'll have water, less water will be used on an annual basis regardless of its source.
Okay.
Does that answer the question?
It does, but I think he's looking for some, something you can hang a hat on. Are we looking at 5%, 10%, 120%? Can you get, are you able to provide an estimate, or are you simply not able to?
I'm not able to.
Fair enough. Mr. Arbaitman?
One more question and then a comment. The second question is, my understanding is that all of these regulations that we're looking at in this article do not apply to private wells that can still be dug, they can still put in new outdoor irrigation systems and draw their water from the exact same source that the town public water is drawn from. Is that correct, that the regulations will not apply to private well water?
Okay. Mr. Manugian?
Yes, two points on that. The DEP, when it set up the new swimmy regulations, started big. They're looking at the public water suppliers. Ultimately, they've said that they would like to use it to look at private wells also, but they're not at that point yet. Second is, private wells are not regulated by this chapter of our town bylaws, they're regulated by a different chapter. And I believe Sustainability Committee has started the conversation with the Board of Health, which regulates private wells.
Okay.
And a quick comment. I just want to thank the town and Mr. Manugian specifically. And a quick comment, I just want to thank the town and Mr. Menugian specifically. I don't think these water conservation measures are adequate for what we're doing hooking up, if we hook up to the MWRA. But I had asked that last November, when this, when the MWRA proposal was before the town, that we needed to have a companion article for conservation measures. So, I'm greatly appreciative that we've taken a step in the right direction here, and I think there's a lot more work to be done on it, but I think this is a good step in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Greenstein.
Hi, Jane Greenstein, 5 Sandstone Way. I just have a point of clarification, I'm just, so that I understand exactly what the new rules are going to be. Under the proposed permanent restrictions, A, just says outdoor watering. Is that automatic sprinkler or any watering? Because in stage one, it specifies automatic sprinklers, so that's my first question.
Well, let's get that answered. Mr. Menugian?
So, there are exemptions to all of these regulations in the bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
So, for example, if you are hand-watering a garden for food purposes, those are exempt from these regulations?
Under all levels of?
Under all levels.
All levels, okay.
So, to your question specifically, however, other outdoor watering is prohibited, all outdoor watering is prohibited on those days, regardless of whether it's a hose with town water or an in-ground irrigation system with town water.
So, a follow-up question then, Moderator, is if you, the one problem I see with the regulations is there's no consideration of having planted a tree and needing to water a tree daily for an extended period of time so that you won't plant a tree and have it die. I've had to rip out some dead, overgrown bushes and four years ago, and I haven't been able to replant trees, which what everyone would, I think, would argue would be a good thing to do for the environment, because fall is the season you're supposed to plant trees. And every fall, we have restrictions that preclude me from being able to water my tree daily. So, I'm just, that's the only concern I have in this, if there's any way around that.
So, are there exemptions to the water, water restrictions for?
Non-edible, but, you know, new plantings.
Sure. Mr. Moderator, if you can give?
Things that are good, but we want to define them.
I will look up the exemptions and come back.
Okay. How about, Jane, we get you an answer on that, and we'll come back.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeffrey Lemay, 39 Summit Lane. I'm opposed to the changes to Ashland's watering restrictions, because I think they should also include a removal of Ashland's ban on permits for municipally-connected in-ground irrigation systems. Such systems are typically sized for the landscape that they're going to irrigate, they have sensors to prevent double watering when it rains, and they have timers to shut themselves off. These systems use water very efficiently. We've heard people talk in the previous article about the need for us to use our water resources more efficiently. I planted a lawn at my home this spring, and I've been watering with hoses and sprinklers. Nearly all of the connections are leaky, and too much of the water ends up sprinkled on my driveway and into the road. This is terribly wasteful of our resources, and I believe that many of my fellow residents will, do face the same frustrations. The EPA's best practices for residential irrigation state that, quote, "When irrigation is used, it must be used in an efficient manner." Irrigation is still allowed in Ashland, but we're not permitting systems that can use the latest technology to allow us to use our local resources as efficiently as possible. Ashland's water policy, in my opinion, just stands in complete contrast of the EPA here. I've asked the Ashland Sustainability Committee and the DPW for any data that would lead them to the conclusion that this ban would lead to a reduction in municipal water use. I haven't gotten any data from either body. I'd just like to say that Ashland has this incredible resource to locally well our own water, and we should be encouraging, not banning our residents, to use smart technology to use these resources as efficiently as possible. Mr. Moderator, would, could I make a move to change the motion at hand to additionally remove the ban on permits for?
Let's do this. I don't want to entertain a motion at this point, but if you work with counsel or Mr. Menugian to get the wording you would like, and then when you get it, bring it to me, and at the appropriate time, we will put that motion in play.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, thank you. Amy Syed, 106 High Street. I'd like to, a point of clarification, under the stage one, section two, the strikeout. If I'm interpreting this correctly, it appears that under stage one, residents would still be able to do outside watering by bucket, can or handheld on those allowed days. Is that correct?
Mr. somebody, Mr. Menugian is tied up. Can someone else answer that question? Mr. Skiavi?
My understanding is that is correct.
Okay.
They're removing that restriction.
Then, I'd like a little bit more of an understanding of the rationale behind that. If this is a, if this is a act to further conserve, why are we taking away a conservation method?
I'm going to ask you, if you just grabbed that, wait, oh, we have someone, okay.
Roy Carrera, Ashland Water Sewer. Mr. Moderator, your question, I believe, is why do we allow hand-watering during stage one?
Correct, that we are now allowing what we previously?
We've always allowed hand-watering in stage one. Stage two is absolutely no water, including hand-watering. Originally on stage one, we did not allow sprinklers, because most people run them 20 minutes to a half hour, believe it or not, whereas hand-watering, most people give up after five minutes, and it's only a little can.
Okay, so?
So, it is a form of conservation. You still get the water, but people get a little more tired lugging that can around. But stage one has always included hand-watering.
Okay, so, maybe I need to word this then differently. So, okay, I think I understand now. So, basically, what we're saying is that there's no restriction on outside watering differently?
Not on hand-watering.
Except for automatic sprinkler use?
Automatic sprinkler use is taking out, at stage one, there's no more automatic sprinkler wash, use.
So, for an individual that had a, say, a stationary sprinkler, that prior, they could not use that under stage one, and now they can?
That's correct. That's a sprinkler, yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Just, they still cannot?
Cannot use sprinklers, hand-watering only. That means a hose with a spigot or a pail or a watering can.
But it's strike, it's strike, there's a strikeout for that line under this.
For the hand-watering?
Stage one, yeah.
I don't have it in front of me. And where was it?
I don't know.
On stage one, you said?
Yeah.
Dave, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, sure. Hand-watering, did it strike? Mr. Moderator? May I?
I'm sorry?
May I approach?
Sure, sure.
Attempt to answer?
Yeah, please.
I believe the intent of, well, the, not believe, but the intent of that change was, essentially, you're taking, you're allowing automatic watering now. It's actually a benefit to people that have lawns, because what we've done is we've changed from three days a week under, under year-round permanent restrictions to two days a week under permanent restrictions. So, when you go to stage one, instead of just being able to hand-water, now we're allowing sprinkler use, because the conservation that we save in the permanent restrictions will be reserved for stage one. So, essentially, people that couldn't water their lawns at all during a stage one can now use their sprinkler system. So, it's kind of a, an exchange of conservation year-round, and then, you know, the ability to use the sprinkler system in that stage one. That was the?
Exactly. And I would add, somebody asked at one of the hearings, "Well, if I just water, hand-water once a week," you've struck that out, but this allows you to use a sprinkler or hand-water once a week during stage one.
I mean, and from a, you know, I mean, again, we're dealing with different philosophies on conservation here, obviously, right? So, you know, a true purist that wants?
You know what, I'm going to stop, because we wanted to answer the question, but let's just get to that point. So, are you all set?
Yeah, I just wanted to then make one final point, is that I understand the rationale of what was used here, but then, but we're, if we're at stage one, what we did doesn't matter. So, if we did conserve under stage, under the normal process, and we get to stage one, we got to stage one, it doesn't matter whether we conserved it or not. So, I feel that I, that that, it's hard for me, because I, I support the concept of conservation, but it feels like, once we're in stage one, there really isn't that much of a difference, and so that, I think, just that's a point, a point to make. Thank you.
Hang on one minute, please. Wendy, where did you go?
Wendy.
Wendy Syed, where did you go?
I'm sorry, Amy.
Oh, Amy, sorry.
She said the wrong name.
You had a question that we couldn't answer?
No, you did answer the question, and that was, what was it, I wanted to understand the rationale, and it was, it was explained as?
Okay.
The hope is that, under, under normal water process, we're now conserving.
I thought, I thought there was someone else.
Nope. That was explained. Thank you very much.
Ms. Nardone?
Julie Nardone, 86 Elliott Street. This looks like a conservation article, but it isn't. And if you read, I have gotten the sustainability minutes, and these minutes are spectacular, A-plus, and they say right here, "David Menugian provided the committee with updated bylaw changes. These were intended to accompany the addition of an additional water source such as the MWRA. Preston asked if the change of use to allow automated sprinklers on one day a week during stage one restrictions should be removed if the MWRA article does not pass." And if you go to their December minutes, Mr. Menugian is talking about how the irrigation water is the most profitable water that the DPW sells. So, I think this is a way to actually, quote-unquote, "make more money," making it look like a conservation article. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, Steve Morgan, 136 Cochran Street. I, I'm a little concerned about this article, mainly, mainly, I got involved with this last fall when the informational meeting prior to the Fall Town Meeting occurred, and there was a much longer presentation that I sat through at the townhouse, which had projected rates and other things in it, and I asked a few questions about the data presented. And it was very clear to me from that meeting that the information presented was not fact-based, it was speculation, it wasn't graphed properly. And so, being, looking at this issue, you know, I must say that, you know, this is a very simple thing when you want to conserve resources. You know, you look at your uses, you look at, you know, what the largest use, you create a Pareto chart, they're used all the time in operations for business, you look at your biggest sources, and that's what you address. You know, I asked the question last fall about this eight to nine percent of lost water. We've had since last fall to decide which of that lost water is real lost water and which is not lost water. There's, I think, no question that that eight to nine percent is the largest item that would go to the top of that Pareto chart as to lost resources. It probably swamps these conservation efforts several times over, and the focus ought to be on getting the operations at the Water Department to correctly measure and address the biggest problems. That, that's my viewpoint from an operational point of view. I'd love to see that Pareto diagram and to show progress on a regular basis as to how that biggest issue is reduced, because it doesn't appear that that issue has been reduced since last fall when it was discussed. So, that's my view. I support, you know, you know, having enough water to do normal things without being the most restrictive town in Metro West. I think, I think that's what we should be focused on, we should be focused on using our water effectively and addressing the largest issues first.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Rooney?
Catherine Rooney, 136 Fountain Street. So, I'm a garden designer, and I deal with water issues all the time, and I deal with clients screaming at me about how big their water bills are. That being said, there's ways to mitigate that in the once or twice-a-week watering that we're going to automatically. You can water deeply more often, and your roots for your lawns, your trees, your shrubs, your gardens become more drought tolerant. If you're trying to grow trees, use tree bags. You can fill them on the days, the appointed days with water, the water leaches into the ground, so your trees are never without water. That being said, I appreciate all the work that many people in this room have done to bring this water conservation issue to the table. What I'm concerned about is, we get 47 and a quarter inches of rainfall in Massachusetts. In Arizona, in California, they get 8.3 gallons, 8.3 inches of water per year where they're growing most of the nation's food. The Redwood area in California only gets 20 inches of rain a year. So, when I look at us getting more than double and screaming about water conservation, we need to get our heads around this. Water is the most precious resource, we all need to conserve it, and there's lots of things we could be doing. What I would like to see in the future is more on gray water and reusing of that water for landscape purposes, then we won't be arguing about our well water. And I would also really like to see us disconnect all of our storm gutters and put that water back into our landscapes, so the water's going down to our aquifers, and maybe we'll have less reason to be using expensive MWRA water. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Janet Platt, 11 Rodman Road. I can kind of see how reducing from three days a week to two days a week would conserve water, although if I had an automatic sprinkler system, I would probably just set it up to go one and a half times as much on the two days I could go, so that I could get enough water to my grass. So, I don't necessarily believe that that will work. And then, in the stage one restrictions, I actually don't support that. I feel like the way it's written now, especially after Mr. Menugian said, you know, if you have to stand there and hold your hose, you're not going to stand there as long as somebody with an automatic sprinkler. Conservation hurts. This is rewarding us, and I don't even see how it's conservation. I don't think it goes far enough, I don't think it does much to really make us aware of how much water we use and try not to use as much, and I can't support this.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, we haven't had anybody join the line for quite some time, so if you're in line, you can speak, if you're not in line, you can't. It's amazing how people miraculously appear.
Mr. Moderator, two points of information. Ms. Nardone is correct, we have a tiered water rate system, so we charge the most to people using irrigation water, we charge the least to people using smaller quantities of water for household use. Second point is, we identified approximately 28 million gallons on an annual basis of leak water that occurs. In addition to that, our leak detection program this year found approximately 32 million gallons worth on an annual basis of leaks, and we fixed all of those leaks. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go, there are more on this side, so I'm actually going to have, hang on.
Carol Bartley, 3 Hunting Hill Lane. Not to beat this to death, but if you look at this from someone who's moving to Ashland and takes the time to look at the water restrictions, then stage one, number two, makes no sense to me to have that lined out. I do nothing but water a few flowers, I can have it done in four minutes. If that's gone, and I don't know that I can continue to do that, when we go into stage one and I look at putting out an automatic sprinkler, it's now going on my lawn, on my driveway, and it's going to take an awful lot of time to get as much water as I can get on those little plants in, you know, four minutes. I'm going to have that thing running for an hour all over the place. So, I, I don't understand the logic for it. I had a private, another, in another meeting with Dave, one of the prior meetings, he said, "Yeah, you can still do that." But if you're moving to Ashland and you read this, or even I didn't know, I said, "Oh, I can't do that anymore." And yet, that is the most, the way to conserve more water than using a sprinkler. So, I don't understand why the Sustainability Committee, or I don't understand why it's taken out. I think it should be back in.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney?
Marsha Rooney, Bay Colony Drive. I have a comment and a question. The comment is to thank the Sustainability Committee and everybody who's talking conservation, but I think that this is, we really need to focus on public education, and really, we want to get to the place where, if you, if we're in the dog days of July and August, and you have a bright green lawn, that's not something to be proud of, it's something that indicates something's amiss. Your lawn should have gone dormant, and it should not be bright green. And I think it's similar to some of the other changes we've seen in public perception around others, other things. We need to get there, so. But my question is, I don't understand, and I mean, it's a genuine question, not a rhetorical one, so I hope I can get an answer. When you're talking conservation, all of our water is metered. Why are we trying to go, describe behaviors as opposed to simply limit how much water people can take by meter?
Did you say limiting?
Well, I mean?
I just didn't hear.
Limit. In other words, I mean, Mr. Menugians talk about the tiered water rates, first of all, I think, I know that, I know that we do that to encourage conservation. Why aren't we looking at measures that, that take that even a step higher? Why aren't our tiers even steeper? our tiers even steeper, so that when people are using too much water, as opposed to trying to catch them in the act of watering illegally? You know, why is it that if somebody is, we don't have an in-ground sprinkler, so if I'm not home on, my day is Sunday, and I'm not home then, but Saturday I happen to be home, I can't go around with my hose and water that day, because I'm not home?
Let's try to get an answer to your question.
So, excuse me, I just want to say, so why is it that we are not--
I was gonna come back to you after we got the answer to the question. I was gonna come back to you--
Okay, I'm not, I just want to say that, why do we look at behavior instead of why are we, and I know it might be a system we need to move toward, but I feel it's convoluted, and I, that's my question.
Sure, it's a very good question. In fact, it came up at the Sustainability Committee meetings. Right now, we don't have meters that identify simply irrigation use in town. Residents can choose whether they want a meter for their water slash sewer, or two separate meters. Many residents still choose to pay water and sewer rates on all their water use. This bylaw is a first step in that, over the course of a few years, it puts in place a requirement that anybody using irrigation would need a meter. Then at that point, we would have a mechanism to identify all the irrigation use in town.
Did that answer your question, Marsha? You can stay there and just-- Use the mic, please.
Regardless of whether it's using, people who are irrigating on their regular meter, it still shows as, as water use. You still must be able to see that they have an enormous bill because they're irrigating. So, I don't under, I, I understand we're not there yet in terms of the separate metering, but still, there are people using tons of water and people who are not, and I don't understand why we're not regulating that behavior.
So, just briefly, we read meters four times a year. So, we don't identify water use on a daily basis, or even on a weekly basis. So, we don't have the mechanism right now to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Manugian.
Tricia Kendall, 25 Olive Street. I just wanted to comment on the Sustainability Committee, and that it is easy to take the, some points out of the meeting minutes of anybody's meeting and to take them out of context. The meetings are open to the public. We get very few visitors to our Sustainability Meetings, but we would encourage anyone with questions or new ideas, please to join us. Come, and we'll put you on the agenda so that we can discuss all of these issues in, in more depth. The second thing is that I think there's going to be a motion on the floor, maybe perhaps for an amendment, if it does come up, about removing the ban on new sprinkler systems. And I think that would be a very bad idea to do on spur of the moment without proper investigation of what that might mean. So, it would be opposed to an amendment that would kind of change a previous decision that was discussed more in length. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ken Rush, 11 Belknap Circle. Echoing a earlier speaker, I'm looking at the permanent restrictions in item A, and I'm not sure what, if any savings we're gonna see there, because people who have sprinkler systems will just let them water longer on the days they're allowed, and that watering will be less efficient than allowing, you know, three times a week with a lesser usage each time. So, accordingly, I would, I make a motion to amend the article in subsection A for--
Ken, I'm gonna ask you to hold off, because there's already a, a motion to amend that I asked to hold off on--
Okay.
--and get the proper language. So, if, after we deal with that amendment, you still wish to make the amendment, I'll allow you to do so at that time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Dwayne McCullough, 9 Birch Hill Road. I'm relatively new to the town, bought a home here two years ago, and I'm probably the only person in town with this concern. I'm active duty. I work mostly nights, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM in Boston. On this schedule, I would never be able to water my lawn, so I would have a patch of dirt, and that's about it. Because I can only water from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and I'm usually at work. And I'm not allowed to put in an automated system. I can't get a in-ground irrigation, so I have absolutely no idea how I would ever be able to water my lawn. And then the other point is, if we go into the stage one and there's no vehicle washing permitted, is that gonna shut down the car washes in town as well, or are they gonna be allowed to operate?
Let me get you to answer, but first, thank you very much for your service.
Oh, no problem.
Mr. Manugian, you wanna try to answer those?
There are exemptions. Commercial car washes are exempt from these regulations.
And how about the first part of that? The, I, I work when I'm allowed to water? Paraphrasing?
Basically, under those conditions, he is correct.
So he wouldn't be able to water?
And, and my concern for that is, I, I could be moved next year, I could be moved two years. I don't know how I'm gonna sell a home with a dirt patch in the front. It's a real concern, so that's all I have.
Thank you. And this will be the last comment on this before we get to the substitute motion?
Gary Ingram, Olive Street. No points of order, no law. I just have some visceral feelings about the whole thing and, and some comments. Number one, I'd like a clarification. You use irrigation systems and automatic sprinklers. Are they an interchangeable term?
Yes.
Okay, for the last, the last comment about watering when someone's not available, I would hazard that available in any good garden supply store or catalog, you'll find automatic sprinkler systems that you can hook up to your faucet and your hose, and it'll turn on and off, can be electronic, could be mechanical, very easy to handle. I have additional changes to this that I'd like to also propose. I can either state them now and--
I'm gonna put you third in line for motion, substitute motion.
Thank you.
Okay. And do you have an answer to something, or?
No, I, I never had an answer to the question.
Oh, you were the one who had the question. I'm sorry.
And I want everyone to hear the answer, not just me to hear the answer.
I thought it was Amy, not you.
No, I'm sorry.
What was the question again, Jane? I apologize.
The question is, is, is there a way to plant trees and water them?
They, yes, we did look. There are exemptions, but that is not an exemption.
Okay, under current or proposed bylaws?
That's correct.
I would argue that's a concern.
I will take my, my leave to say that an earlier commenter, Jane, an earlier commenter did mention the word "tree bag" for that. I, I don't know what they are, but it sounded like it was relevant. And I hope I didn't just offend anyone, because I don't know what a tree bag is. All right, discussion on this item is now closed, and the parade of motions will, will start. The first substitute motion, and the way we will handle this is, we will receive the substitute motion, we will vote on that motion. If it's approved, we then go back to any motions that may be, wanted to be made on top of that. If it's not, we move on to the next substitute motion. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to additionally remove section C of chapter 270 water use restrictions. And I urge someone in the audience to second that.
That would be section C?
Sorry, chapter 270 dash five, section C.
The one that says, beginning on May tw--
That, that's the one.
All right, thank you. And do you have that, even though, do you have that scriptable down?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so the substitute motion is to remove section 270 dash five, subsection C, that currently reads, beginning on May 2nd, 2013, there should be no, counsel could do that, because we can do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Beginning on May 2nd, 2013, which means it's already in effect, there shall be no new in-ground irrigation systems permitted to be connected to municipal water system. So, the gentleman making the motion seeks to remove that, which would have the effect of allowing new irrigation systems. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. That motion is made. Do I have a second on that motion? There is a second on that motion. So what we will do now is, we will vote on that substitute motion. If it-- We have to, I'm sorry, you're, I apologize. You're right. Discussion on that?
One of the reasons-- Wayne Bates, 66 St. Robus Lane. One of the reasons why we put, or the intention of putting MWRA before the conservation was because there are certain things in conservation that rely on MWRA. If, if we do not connect to the MWRA or have an alternative source, you do not want new irrigation systems in town, and we have to make it hurt. So, I mean, those are the conservation measures that would be needed. Our first, that was one of our first attempts at conservation in town, was to stop, get, get a sense of what's going on, what can we do, have these discussions, and more of these discussions about what we can do to conserve water before we start turning on, you know, allowing additional irrigation systems. And there's a lot of work to be done, because what was mentioned before with irrigation wells being installed is an issue, and it needs to be addressed. There's a lot of issues that need to be addressed. I, I would say, do not allow new irrigation systems until we have figured out how we can have a sustainable supply of water in Ashland. Thank you.
We're gonna let other folks comment. Hugh made the motion, second.
Preston Crowe, 41 Rockwood Drive. I'm opposed to this. I don't think that we have sufficient water sources to support the significant new usage of water that this would entail. For example, all new developments in town would be putting in sprinkler systems, whereas now they are not, or they are putting in wells. I'm also surprised that this is within the four corners for this article to consider that, and I, I'm curious as to the, if council wants to mention why that is allowed.
I, I don't think it's close. It's, it's posted in the warrant, anything posted in the warrant is open for fair game?
Right. So it's within the four corners, it's posted in the warrant. People have noticed that it's up for discussion, so it's absolutely within.
Okay.
Joel Arbeidman, Woodridge Lane. First, I just want to point out that this very restriction is not some thing that, you know, the DPW director came up with independently. This exact wording that you see here in our bylaw came before Town Meeting back in May of 2013, and it was passed overwhelmingly. We can't be short-sighted. You know, nobody likes to have restrictions. We want green lawns, we want to water trees, we, we want to be free and be able to do whatever we like. If we turn our backs on things like climate change, if we can't see what's going on with water all over the world, and especially in this country, right now on the West Coast, anybody who's confident that we're not going to be seeing severe droughts, we're gonna be desperate for every drop of water we can find. And I think that this is incredibly short-sighted to start peddling backwards and encouraging more water use. It's nice to have the flexibility and the freedom. This is very ill-advised, and I guess, I would like to ask if the moderator, whether the, the motion sponsor can inform us how much more water usage for the town a change in this policy would lead to. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, do, do you have an answer to that question? Hang on. Do, do you have an answer to the question?
No, I, I don't have an answer to that question, but I have, I understand this has come before Town Meeting before. I've, I've, with all due respect to Mr. Bates and Ms. Kendall here--
Sir, the, the question was, do you have an, have an answer?
I've, I've asked for the data to support that this, that the law as written conserves water. I have not received that data from the town.
Hi, Matt Marshquist, 12 Weston Road. I was responsible for bringing this to the town. It came to our committee as a, a suggestion from a citizen, and we saw it as a good first step. I agree that this is important. With the current water use, we cannot make a change to this, because the reason we did this was we have a limited resource. And we looked at in-ground irrigation systems and saw that they are hard to diagnose when there are leaks. They use more water than hand watering, and in general, we wanted to encourage a sustainable policy when we had a finite resource, and this was a good first place to stop. The, the people who are concerned about being able to water, I'd just like to encourage you to look into some of the alternatives. Our DPW has a rain barrel program that's good for a lot of hand watering use. Sisterns are an option, and they can water much larger areas. Tree bags are an option for new trees. There are a lot of things, and I think, in general, we want to encourage people to get beyond the idea that you actually need to water a lawn. You need to water some new plantings and things like that, but in this area, you want to plant native plants that can survive in our climate. So I just wanted to say that. I'd also like to say that I, I think that the Sustainability Committee is open to changes on this, but I, I don't, I wouldn't consider changing this without these additional controls, you know, having weather sensors, and I think that it's something that probably needs to wait until we actually see how the connection to MWRA is, is helping us with our water shortages.
Thank you. These will be the last two comments, and Kathy, if I can have you stop for a second. There was someone who wanted to make an additional motion, a third person. If that, hi Gary, if you would come up and present it to council, make sure it's, it's in proper form and everything before we get to it. Thank you. No, I mean, if you could just come up now and give it to council. Kathy, sorry. Please.
Kathy Rooney, 136 Fountain Street. So, I'd just like to remind the town that deep watering less frequently promotes drought-tolerant lawns, shrubs, trees, et cetera. The other thing I think is that it, it's a total waste to be watering, irrigating with potable water. Potable water is for us to be drinking. We should be irrigating with gray water, and if people are really desperate to do irrigation, then we should be seriously looking into gray water, which is reusing our laundry wash water, reusing our shower water. It'd be an awesome way to reuse it instead of flushing it out to Massachusetts Bay polluted. Thank you.
And as noted, this will be the last comment on this.
Tricia Kendall, 25 Olive Street. And Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to say that I feel like I have to be a little bit defensive here tonight. I was unaware that there was an outstanding question about water use in Ashland. Mr. Lemay did come to our meetings. We had a great discussion that he, on the meeting he attended to about water, but I was unaware that he had an outstanding question, otherwise we would have tried to address that for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion properly made and seconded. We've had sufficient discussion on this. So, on the motion made and seconded, which would eliminate section 270 dash five C, which effectively would now allow new irrigation systems to be installed. This will require a simple majority, yes, to be added to the motion. This will only add it to the motion, it will not approve it. All those in favor of, of strike, excuse me, adding that restriction or, or allowing new systems in the motion. Okay, no one's clear, because I'm not being clear. Thank you, Roberta.
That removes that restriction from the bylaw.
This is why she went to law school. This motion will substitute the motion currently in front of you. It will remove the restriction from the bylaw if and only if the main motion passes.
If this passes, that it becomes part of--
Right, that's what I'm saying. This, this would amend the motion, the main motion. Okay? So approving this substitute motion would change the motion in front of you. It would remove the restriction that prohibits new irrigation systems. In other words, it would allow new irrigation systems. Then we have to go back and vote that main motion. So, I, I'm gonna use my prerogative here and try to make this simple. And if anyone objects, please tell me, and I will make it less simple. When I say yes and no, if you're in favor of allowing new irrigation systems, raise your card. If you're not, raise them when I say no. Is everyone okay with that simplification? Counsel my good with that simplification? Okay. So we'll start with a hand count. Effectively, all those in favor of potentially allowing new irrigation systems, raise your green cards. Thank you. Those opposed, that motion fails. We are now back to the main motion, and I have another substitute motion that was made by Mr. Rush. What it does, in essence, is remove the changes being made to section 270 dash five A. Right now, in the main motion, it removes the ability to water odd-numbered addresses on Tuesdays and Thursdays and adds Wednesdays. It removes the ability to water even-numbered addresses on Wednesday and Friday and adds Thursday. This substitute motion would ignore all those and leave it the way it currently reads in the bylaw, meaning-- the bylaw, meaning that odd-numbered addresses would be able to water on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. Even-numbered addresses would be able to water Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday, and nobody could still water on Monday. Mr. Rush, is that a fair representation? So, I have that substitute motion. Is there a second for that?
A second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion on that? Mr. Dissoni.
Thank you, Ms. Maria. It seems like it says reverse and odd-even, but still got the same restrictions. Is that about right?
No. What the original motion is doing is, and again, I'm paraphrasing, and please let me know if you have a problem with it. Now, you can water three days a week. In the new proposed motion, you can water two days a week. Mr. Rush is suggesting we still be able to water three days a week.
So, three days a week is what was, what got started?
I'm sorry.
The three days a week is what the main motion already had.
And that's what Mr. Rush is attempting to do, to retain the current wording.
Then, okay, thank you.
Ms. Rooney, you were in line?
Yes. I just wanted to remind the audience once again that longer, deeper watering, even if it's less times a week, promotes better drought-tolerant plants. Thank you.
Mr. Rush?
My concern is, is that the longer watering will result in more water running off your lawn into the street.
Gary?
I agree with the substitute motion as it stands. I don't think it goes far enough, and that is the basis for my substitute, substitute motion. I believe that what was trying to be done originally by narrowing the amount of, or the window of days that we could water is admirable, but I think that it went too far, and I would suggest that we take the prohibition, excuse me, the strikeout that we were going to put through under conditional stage one and move it up into permanent outdoor with the addition of timed sprinkler systems, and that we limit the water watering...
Gary, I'm gonna stop you for one second.
It goes into the next...
Because, no, no, not that.
Sorry, I understand.
Because we're talking about one motion that is effectively loosening what's proposed, and you're suggesting one, you're suggesting one that is more strict than what was proposed, and we can't deal with more and less at the same time.
Gotcha.
So, we're gonna deal with a motion now that deals with more than what's proposed. After we address that, we can come back and properly address your motion. Is that fair?
AB side, 106 High Street. I just wanted to go back to my original question I had earlier and the answer that I received, that this was part of a conjunction with some of the other additional parts of the warrant, and for that reason, I request that this, well, let's point this way. My opinion is that you can't take part of it out and let the rest of it go, because it feels like it was, the decisions were made all in conjunction, and that was the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joel, the last comment? Okay, Jerry, you got up. Joel.
Okay, thank you, Joel Arbeidman, Woodridge Lane. This conservation article was a direct response to very real concerns that were raised about increasing our supply of water, and as I stated earlier, Stoughton experienced a 30% increase in how much water each of their residents used on average. And Mr. Menugian took on the task of trying to come up, whether we like each proposal or that there are things we might change about it. The intent here by one of the most knowledgeable people in the town is that by going from three days a week of outdoor watering to two, we are going to see a balancing of the likely increase if we are to hook up to the MWR. So, conservation is critical for us and our, the sustainability of this town's future, and I think, you know, we will learn as we go, and this can always be adjusted, but to turn our backs on going from three days to two, when our DPW director tells us that that will help us conserve water, I think is very short-sighted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Mr. Effron?
Jerry Effron, 336 Cedar Street. Just a brief question for Mr. Menugian. On the stage one and stage two thresholds, which appear when you read them to just be, the first one, calendar-based, how often does the town get the information as to the depth of the Hopkinton reservoir so as to trigger those?
Mr. Menugian?
In season, we check that daily.
I seem to remember in the old days, it felt like hourly. Discussion on the second substitute motion is now closed. And again, using my moderator's license, I'll simplify it. When I ask for your vote, if you are in favor of retaining watering three days a week, you'll raise your card. If you're in favor of two days a week, sorry, if you're in favor of three days a week, instead of the motion here, which suggests two, you'll vote yes. If you're not in favor of three and in favor of two, you will vote no. Is there anyone not clear on that? Counsel, I'm good. I'm always gonna check. That way, it's her fault, not mine. All those in favor of three, yes. Thank you. All those not in favor of three, that substitute motion fails. We are now yet again back to the main motion, but I have a feeling we're not done. I should play the lottery.
I was hoping that the main motion would succeed, because my motion also contains the exact same request, and if I'm allowed to do that, I would like to remove the strikeouts and return that to a three-day-a-week from a two-day.
I won't allow that. The motion just failed.
It's part of my, the rest of my motion.
Right. Counsel, I'm on firm ground. We just passed that. You can't ask town meeting to do something they just said they wouldn't do.
Correct.
You can, the rest of your motion, if you want to make other changes, that's perfectly fine.
That's fine.
But to go back and say, we want you to do what you just said you didn't want to do, is not value-added.
Which is why I requested that we might merge the two motions, but let me, let me try with what I have here. In order to facilitate going back to three, which we are not going to be able to vote on, I would suggest that we take the outdoor watering method restriction that we have under stage one and move that into our permanent restriction with the additional caveat or timed water, timed sprinkler systems to account for the lawn watering. And under the section B, that we change the hours from 12:00 PM to 7:00 AM to 12, to 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM, with water shall be started on the day allowed and may run only until the end of the calendar day. Secondly...
Okay, I want to make sure I'm following, because you've got multi-parts here. So, the first part, I want to be clear, you're looking to take stage one subsection two, II, and move that to where?
AII, or AI, under...
A...
Permanent water.
Permanent water.
AI. Is that gonna, I'm not questioning...
No, no.
...what you're trying to do, but is that ordering and location gonna work for us?
I mean, the numbering is peripheral.
They're numbering peripheral.
With the addition that timed sprinkler systems...
No, I understand. I want to make sure I'm clear on what you're attempting to do. So, part one is to move stage one, II, to use, permanent use restrictions, AI. Is that correct?
Correct.
The second part of that would be to change...
Section B.
Permanent outdoor water use restrictions, section B, which currently reads between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, watering shall be started on the day allowed and may run into the morning of the following day. Your substitute motion would change that to between 7:00 PM and 12:00 AM, watering shall be started on the day allowed and may run only...
Until the calendar date termination.
Only until the termination of the calendar day. And I'm hoping you have those words written down for me.
I do.
Thank you. Was there a third part?
Yes. I would also request that we remove the strikeout in conditional water use restrictions, stage one, III, and remove the strikeout on prohibited, and remove the new language that was substitute. And automatic sprinkler use should be prohibited once we hit stage one.
So, remove all of three?
Correct. Remove everything that's being added to it and, and take the strikeout out.
So, your intent is to leave that section three...
That is correct.
As it is currently.
Once we hit stage one, then all automatic sprinkler use should be terminated.
Or simply the use of automatic sprinkler system is prohibited?
Right.
Okay.
And in stage two, once we get to stage two...
We can't deal with all this at one time.
Well, just, let's, let's try it, because it's fairly...
No, no, see, I say we're not going to deal with all at one time, so you don't get to say, let's try it.
May I, may I put it forth to you so you can look at it?
No, what I'm gonna suggest is we break it up into pieces.
Agreed, but the general gist of the whole amendment or substitute motion should be taken in context of the whole thing, not on a piece basis.
You may certainly speak to the other piece you'd like to make. We will just deal with them in pieces, so...
That's your, that's your ruling.
It is, because there's no way these 130 people in this room are following everything that you're trying to do without a piece of paper in front of them.
Okay, I mean, that's fine.
So, we're gonna have to deal with it in pieces in order to make sure that everyone is clear on what they're voting on.
That's fine.
I'm not disallowing anything you're trying to do. So, what was the last part that you wanted to mention?
The last piece?
The last piece?
The last piece would be under the stage two restrictions, II. Instead of striking out outdoor watering, ban outdoor watering is prohibited, and substituting the town, we could still strike it out, but the wording should be the town acting through the board, excuse me, we would leave it in and add, the town acting through the Board of Selectmen as water commissioners retain the rights to relax these restrictions with due notice to residents under special circumstances, as opposed to making it a, a right to impose additional restrictions.
So, what you're saying, what you're looking to do is, instead of saying the board can pose, impose additional restrictions if we get to stage two, you're suggesting that the wording be, the board shall be allowed to relax if we get to stage two?
That's, but leaving in that the outdoor watering ban, outdoor watering is prohibited, and that they may relax that under special circumstances, as opposed to, as opposed to allowing them to have the responsibility of choosing which restrictions to apply and which not to resply, to apply. I just believe that that puts them in a rather precarious position.
Okay. Let me do two things. One is, I'm gonna ask you for the paperwork so that I can follow it.
It's here.
But, but, well, that was kind of what I asked you to do, working with council, because I had to be able to recite it back. What, Lisa?
Yeah, right, that's what I suggested.
Okay, well, we can't hold a town meeting while you get there.
What did you say, a point of order?
You're welcome, a point of order.
Can we vote on keeping this, like, I understand what you're going through, I didn't get most of it, for time, can we vote on keeping it the same before we go through and, because we haven't voted yes on any of the stuff?
A proper substitute motion, well, I'm not sure it's proper yet, but a substitute motion has been proposed, and, and I need to rule on that substitute motion. If it's in order, I have to allow a second, and I have to allow a vote on that. I understand where you're going, but I can't just ignore it, because it's gonna take up too much time. Counsel, would you mind joining me up here so you can walk through this with me? I'm gonna take a three-minute recess, so you guys can stretch your legs while we figure this out. So, town meeting will be in recess for three minutes.
Be my guest.
When you can, print it and give it to me.
I get that, too.
I thought today was the 12th, tomorrow's the 12th, so I didn't have an excuse.
I had time.
I tried, I tried to make it work, but it didn't.
She got called out.
I'm making my daughter sit on this stuff.
Yeah, they're here, they're both here.
I think it's time to split out.
Jealous.
Yeah, I understand.
Defeat it.
We're gonna...
So, here's this, here's the last, I don't have this separate like that, so, I mean, I have it, I don't know if it contains my entire reason, so, on this is this last one, right?
You don't wanna cross out?
No, 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 but it starts from there. I was gonna... Oh, yeah.
So, it crosses the south, and then it crosses the south and starts from there.
And then what it says is, leave that stat, okay? Outdoor watering, outdoor watering, the town acting through the fourth section, we can relax these restrictions under special circumstances.
And I'm gonna have to deal with renumbering of these two.
Don't, we can worry about that.
I'm gonna do it all at once. What you should have done is, you should have come up with what you wanted to do, you should have talked to Tony or Dave and had them get in touch with council, make sure the wording is okay, on something this significant, because the goal isn't to prohibit you from doing it, it's to make the process clear, so people have, and even better, it would have made more sense, is to have copies of it so people can look at it.
How you doing, Adam?
Yeah, no, I know, the office is gone.
I understand what you're trying to do. I understand that, but the gentleman was for you, and he has the right to make his motion. There's no order of precedence. Please take your seats, I have no idea...
Please take your seats. I have no idea if that was three minutes or not. Okay, folks, if everyone please take their seat. Let me explain what we're going to do here. I'm also hopeful that we can limit any future amendments to whatever we end up passing. We've had three now. This is the third one, which is fairly comprehensive. I think that once town meeting makes a ruling on this particular series of, this motion, which will be done a series of changes, it's pretty clear what town meeting wants to do and doesn't want to do. So unless, once we finish this, unless there's an extraordinarily compelling, not just compelling, extraordinarily compelling reason to make another substitute motion, I'm not going to accept any further motions, substitute motions. What I'm going to do after speaking with council and the proponent of the substitute motion is, we're going to deal with this all. Mark, you may just want to sit down because I unfortunately might be here for a little bit. Is we're going to deal with all these changes as one, because as the proponent said, they are related, kind of like the motion itself. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to read it to you. You're going to have to pay really, really, really good attention and pretend it's a test at the end, so you understand what we're voting on. I have it scribbled here. He had it scribbled. It's the best I can do. I apologize. So, this will be the new motion if we approve the substitute motion. To see if the town will amend Chapter 270 Water Use Restrictions, Section 270-5 Restricted Water Uses as follows. Chapter 270 Water Use Restrictions, 270-5 Restricted Water Uses. The following restrictions shall be in effect year-round each year. Permanent outdoor water use restrictions, Section A. Odd-even water, outdoor watering. No Monday watering. Outdoor watering on property having an odd number address is restricted to Wednesday and Saturday. Outdoor watering on property having an even number address is restricted to Thursday and Sunday. There will be a new subsection under A, which reads, Outdoor Watering Method Restriction. Outdoor watering is restricted to bucket, can, or handheld hose watering with automatic shut-off nozzle. That's currently located below in Section 2. B. Lawn watering. Watering of lawns restricted to the hours between 7:00 p.m. and 12:00 a.m. Watering shall be started on the day allowed and must conclude at the, and must conclude on the calendar day on which watering commenced. C. Beginning on May 2nd, 2013, there shall be no new in-ground irrigation system permitted to be connected to the municipal water system. D. Honor before July 1, 2016, all irrigation systems shall be equipped with rain gauges and programmable timers to operate the system within the hours allowed under this section. Honor before July 1, 2017, all irrigation systems, that's its scripters errors, irrigation systems, shall have a separate meter and backflow device. In addition, a declaration of the state of water supply conservation shall include one or more of the following restrictions, conditions, or requirements limiting the use of water as necessary to protect the water supply, except for the exemption as provided in Section 270-11. The applicable restrictions, conditions, or requirements shall be included in the public notice. Conditional outdoor water use restrictions. Stage one, hopping in reservoir below 295.85 feet between the days of June 1 through August 31 each year. One, car washing. Car or vehicle washing is prohibited. Three, outdoor automatic sprinkler use. The use of automatic sprinkler systems is prohibited. Four, ornamental ponds and fountains. Operation of ornamental ponds and pools and fountains is prohibited. Five, swimming pools. Filling and topping off of swimming pools and water from the municipal system is prohibited. Stage two. Hopping in reservoir between 295.35 or daily, below, sorry. Hopping in reservoir below 295.35 feet or daily use over 5.90 million gallons. One, all stage one restrictions. Two, outdoor watering ban. Outdoor watering is prohibited. The town acting through the Board of Selectmen as water commissioners retains the right to relax these restrictions with due notice to residents under special circumstances. I am not going to read that again. Gary, did I get that right? Counsel, am I good?
Yes.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to go back to choice A and B, yes and no. If you vote yes, we're going to approve, substitute what I just read for the original main motion. If you vote no, we're going to ignore all of that and go back to what's printed in the warrant. Is anyone not clear about what a yes vote means and a no vote means? Someone is unclear. If you vote yes, the motion will change, the motion for this article will change to what I just read. It does not. It includes three days watering. Town meeting previously voted against the two da- Sorry, sorry, apologies. Sorry. It's two days watering, my apologies. It includes two days watering. Thank you for keeping me straight. Somebody's got to. If you vote yes. I'm getting there. No, it has, it has been made. Was it seconded?
No.
Okay, thank you. Somebody want to second it? Okay, we got a second. Thank you again. So if you vote yes, the motion on this article will be what I just read. If you vote no, we'll ignore everything I just read and go back to what's printed in your warrant book. And then we will immediately go to a vote on that. And then we go back to Article 17 that we tabled. Point of information. Please approach.
Does this change mean that no automatic sprinkler systems are going to be used? And only the watering methods listed under stage 1.2 that is being moved up are to be used? Is that what it's saying, that there's no automatic-
I will defer to the proponent.
Under that particular-
Let's try a simple yes or no.
No. It does not prohibit automatic sprinklers. In fact, that portion was supposed to have an additional wording of also, or automatic sprinklers.
Where?
After outdoor watering method restrictions-
Can you give me a reference? It's easier that way.
Stage one, II, the one that we're moving to the top.
Stage one, II. Okay.
The wording should have included or automatic sprinkler systems?
Okay, so Article II, Section II that is currently under stage one, the proposal is to move that up to permanent water restrictions under Section A. And it would read, the way it reads now, outdoor watering method restriction. Outdoor watering is restricted to bucket, can, or handheld hose watering with automatic shut-off nozzle or automatic sprinkler systems. So the answer to that question is, no, this would not prohibit all automatic irrigation systems. Once again, is everyone clear what a yes vote means and a no vote means? Okay. All those in favor of this substitute motion, please raise your green cards. Brief discussion. We've discussed these issues quite thoroughly.
With the moderators.
You've made the motion.
I understand.
You've made the motion. You've made your argument. Please let others speak.
Kisha Kendall, 25 Allo Street. I would just like to say that since the fall meeting, David has been working on these type of modifications to the water use and conservation. He's been working with us, and I think we should go with what has been worked on over the past couple of months versus something that is being revised on the fly at town meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Melabarber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dale Melabarber, 67 Sudbury Road. Former chairman of the Charter Review Committee for Ashland. And all of these debates on conservation, the way we're posing them right now, are pretty much irrelevant. If you really want to save water, you have to price it right. I'm an economist and operations research analyst, and I can assure you that if you make it priced high enough, you will get conservation. Because the bottom line is, what's the metric? It's how much water we're using, not what we're using it on. If I want to pay to water my car, I'll pay to water my car. Price it right, and over some period of time, the town can determine what those tier levels should be such that we achieve the conservation levels we need. Then you don't need watering police. You don't need to worry about whether you're using your irrigation system. You don't need to worry about whether it's Mondays or Wednesdays. Do I live on the odd side of the street or not? It's all about how much I use and what am I willing to pay. Price it right, and you'll get the conservation you need, and that's the only way you're going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. De Sone.
Okay. No matter if this new motion passes fail, we go back to the regular whatever. After this vote, and I'm not sure if people are going to agree with this, but I'm going to want to move the question after the vote.
Well, that's what the plan is, Mark. Last comment.
And a very brief one. I want to say that when you're dealing with a precious resource like water, and it is in short supply, or it may be in short supply, rich people who can pay more are not entitled to a bigger share. You figure out what the right policy is so that there's a fair and equitable allotment for all of our residents. Thank you.
Okay, that, no.
Mr. Moderator.
No, I'm sorry. We're moving the question. We've had an hour and 23 minutes on this subject. It's time to move her vote.
I understand that, but the intentions are what is germane to this issue.
The intentions are not relevant. What is relevant is the language that is before us.
But does everybody understand what the language intentions are?
We're not going to uphold town meeting to see if they intend-
That this is more prohibitive than what you're allowing?
Gary, we've got to vote on your substitute motion. Everyone still understand the yes and the no? All those in favor of the substitute motion, please raise your card, green cards. Thank you, all eight of you. Those opposed? Thank you. The substitute motion fails. I'm immediately moving the question on Article 18. All those in favor of the motion as printed in the warrant, raise your green cards. Thank you. Opposed? That passes. Back to Article 17 on the table. When we last visited Article 17, the article had been introduced. The article had been spoken to, and discussion was in process. So I'm going to just go back to continue discussion on Article 17.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Robert Scher, 41 Bay Colony Drive. I just, I'm going to vote in favor of this article because I think it's a prudent and moderate measure. But I would suggest, or I'd like to ask Mr. Minuzian some questions that will be, I think given some of the discussion we've had, that it'd be important that we develop more data as we get into the second part of this in the coming months to actually spend money and decide what the actual next step is going to be.
Please, your questions.
So, is there any way that we can either model or ask or find out how much of our current summer water use, which seems to be the problem area, is due to automatic sprinkler systems?
Is there, is there a way, Mr. Minuzian, to determine how much is sprinkler systems and not?
So it's a good question, and it's something the Sustainability Committee talked about as well. We can do rough estimates now based on the numbers I provided, but until we have accurate metering of irrigation, we can't do that. And that's one of the reasons why that's one of our goals in the bylaw we just passed.
And there are a lot of people in line. I'm going to ask you to come quickly and directly to your point, and if you're asked a question, answer it quickly and directly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I just also just to suggest some other things that we try to model the impact of our conservation measures. And if we haven't, if we haven't put together a future water demand through, say, a build-out analysis, that we do something like that so when we have a little more information when we get to the big questions.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommendation makes, mentions that this application step does not result in any immediate expenditure of funds. However, in the body of the motion, it talks about giving the Board of Selectmen the authority to, without limitation, filing legislation, payments of applicable fees and charges, and entering into an agreement with the MWRA. My question is, the fees and charges that might be incurred with this authority, what is an estimate of that, and where are they in the budget?
Mr. Skiaby.
So there's a couple of things that haven't really been brought up. When we have to apply for an emergency connection, one of the things that the MWRA looks at in determining, one of the things they need to find, is has the town established a long-term remedy to their supply deficiencies? And there's a number of ways to do that. One is whether it's through improved conservation, whether it's through additional local and regional water supplies, or has the community made an application for admission to the MWRA system for legitimate water needs beyond its local resources? The language you see in the article is what the MWRA looks for when a community wants to apply for admission, either in whole or as a partial connection like we have. Because that's a requirement that they have. So this is the language provided by the MWRA, and what they need to see before a town, you know, makes their application. So for us, it's about whether the town wants to consider at some point in the future, a connection to the MWRA. And this is the first step in that, and this would be the language that MWRA would look for when we would make that application at some point in the future if the town decides to go that way. So it's in there because that's what they look for, because you have to apply for admission, and you have to have fees and that sort of thing. But the town is not planning to make any expenditures for a connection or anything else until we establish the next piece of this, which is policy and funding.
So the part, so the, you're, where it says the payment of applicable fees, that's just optics for the MWRA?
That's correct. So what they would do is when you apply for admission, based on how much water you wish to utilize when you set your permit level, that dictates the entrance fee based on how many gallons you want your permit set up. Then they calculate and you discuss with them what that entrance fee would be and how much that would be.
And before the payment or obligation of those funds, town meeting would be authorizing that?
An appropriation, that's correct.
And entering into an agreement with the MWRA, what's, what are we talking about there? And are we going to be obligating, would the Board of Selectmen be obligating the town before it comes again before town meeting?
No.
Thank you.
Sir?
Dewey McCullough, 9 Birch Hill Road. Just if we join this MWRA, and I understand it's for any excess that if we run out of water, we take from them, what kind of, if any, rate increase are we going to see on what we're paying? Or will, any idea on that?
Mr. Skiaby.
So there's a couple of things with this. When, and I think that's the point that hasn't really been brought up because we're all focusing on, you know, another supply. I don't think people really understand what goes on in the background that we have happen every fall, where, you know, our groundwater supply is directly related to the level of the reservoir, which we do not control. The limits that were put on there in those 293.85, that's directed on us by DEP. So we don't have control over that. And what ends up happening in the fall, and it happened in 2007, happened in 2013, and it happened again last year, and we didn't actually make, we took a risk about not applying for another emergency connection. And what happens is we have five wells at House Street. We end up locking out three of those wells because the groundwater level is set that it risks bringing sediment and other bad things into our pumps and ruining our system, which means we're running on 40% capacity. And we're essentially working off of tank pressure to supply pressure throughout our water system, which affects our firefighting capacity. It affects the-
Mr. Skiaby, the question related to cost impacts of this, could we focus on the question, please? Because there are 15 people in line. the question, please? Because there are 15 people in line who want to ask questions.
State your question one more time.
Just, what kind of, if we are drawing water actually from the MWRA when ours run out, what kind of rate increase are we going to see, if any? Or will we see a rate decrease? What's the difference in what we're paying right now to the town, but what we're going to pay to the state?
So DPW did an analysis of what it costs for us to treat a cubic foot of our water, treatment, not the distribution, because that's the same regardless of where the source is. What it takes to treat a cubic foot of Ashland water from Howe Street, and what it takes for the MWRA cost for a cubic foot of their water, and it's within a couple of pennies of each other at this point in time.
Okay.
So they're very close.
Thank you. Mr. Melo Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And again, I'd like to strip away and get to some of the heart of the matter. What it really, to me, as an economist and somebody who does risk analysis for a living, the town needs a backup to our current water situation as a risk mitigation, for sure, because sooner or later, the vagaries of climate change, the changes in population of our neighboring towns that draw on the same aquifer, and all the risk factors, and as well as future growth of the town, demand that we have an alternative to the current water situation. And this is a way to stop proceeding down that road now, where it's costless and painless, as opposed to waiting till the last possible minute when the crisis is upon us, and there is no time to plan. So I urge that we enact and approve this amendment. This is the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crow?
Preston Crow, 41 Rockwood. We looked at this in the fall town meeting. My understanding is, this is essentially the same article that we voted on in the fall town meeting, with the financial part and the borrowing part stripped out. The fall town meeting, we had a majority, but we didn't have a two-thirds majority, so it failed. This article's been restructured not to have that borrowing aspect, so it only requires a simple majority. So if we do the same thing we did in the fall, this will pass. And as I said in the fall, I don't like the MWRA. I really don't want to do this. But this has been well researched. We do need a second water source. And unfortunately, I have to admit, this is the right thing for the town to do, despite the fact that it feels bad. It's still the right thing to do, and we should pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Crow. Mr. Bates?
Wayne Bates, Strobas Lane. Again, just reiterating, the gentleman before Preston mentioned risk, and that is critical to this, because we are vulnerable to lack of supply. We're not resilient. We're at the mercy of Mother Nature at the Hopkinton Reservoir. If you use a business analysis on this, this is a line of credit. If you run a business, you don't always get paid on time from your customers, and you go to the bank, and the bank covers your costs for the line of credit. This is a line of credit when Mother Nature isn't delivering on her payments for water, or when DCR is using water to flush out the bathing and swimming hole at Hopkinton State Park. And a point of clarification on Spring Street, I'm not familiar with all the pipes that are in the ground from 1993, and all of the history that Mr. Hannah shared. I'd be interested in learning more about that. But the town...
But not at town meeting.
But not at town meeting.
[laughing]
Offline. But the town hired Haley and Ward, a reputable engineering firm, who's been the water engineer for the town for years and years to do the study on Shore Road, Spring Street. They concluded that Spring Street was not a viable option for a supplemental supply. So I asked the town, people of Ashland, are we paying engineers, professional engineers, with licenses and insurance and liability to provide opinion that we just throw aside and go back to 1993 to when times were different? Alls I know is that TCE showed up in the well, and there's a quarry not too far from there. Quarries use dynamite. Dynamite has perchlorate. Perchlorate is regulated by DEP. You start drawing water out of that well, you're drawing from around the area. Not to mention that the town doesn't own the property sufficient enough to protect the wellhead, the DCR does. So we would have to get an easement from the DCR. Not impossible, definitely not impossible, time, money, expenses. So we would be back here asking for the right to enter an agreement with DCR. Not only that, DCR does not want inter-basin transfers. What that means is, we're pulling water out of Spring Street, using it, sending it to Boston Harbor. You go for a permit, it will be highly contested. Again, not impossible to get the permit, but you will have every non-governmental organization on your doorstep, fighting your application with the state, possibly, you know, coming through and extending the process, if not lawsuits. And I'm not saying Spring Street's not impossible. You can treat, you can remove TCE. Technically, you can do it. Perchlorates are very difficult to remove, very expensive to remove, and not something that the town wants to deal with. So if you're making an investment, are you going to invest in the likelihood of sinking a lot of money at Spring Street to permit, design, construct, turn on, then have to turn off because you have infiltration of perchlorates or TCEs? It's just a simple question. You can answer it any way you want. Or MWRA is opening up, okay, there's skeptics. Sure, MWRA is a big authority that has, you know, charged us a lot of money for sewers, so has Framingham. We still meet with Framingham. We still drive through Framingham. We're still neighbors, right? MWRA has offered to, and all this is speculation, right? So all, when it's in paper and it's two-thirds vote, that's different, but to waive part of the fees for us to join them. MWRA has an abundance of water. Over the last 40 years, MWRA has dropped their water demand from 330 million gallons a day to 200 million gallons a day. They want to sell water. It's critical for them. From a financial standpoint, they need the customers. If we're a customer, we pay the MWRA. If it's cheaper to buy MWRA water...
Wayne, you want to wrap it up?
If it's cheaper to buy MWRA water than it is to pull water out of our own wells at Howe Street, why wouldn't we buy MWRA water? And the fact of the matter is, you run those wells day in, day out. You draw silt into them, you have to redevelop them, you have to put the money into that. I'm just saying, if you're going to make an investment, MWRA, as a professional engineer, MWRA is a much better path to go down at this stage to have a supplemental water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nardone, hang on one second, please. Julie, if you are in line, we will hear from you. If you are not, we will assume that the person in line is going to ask your question.
Okay. I am not for this. I think a lot of the data being presented is skewed. The MWRA water is not less than Ashland. That is just so absurd. The minimum water price in Southborough, and it's going up, is 350. So, you know, this really upsets me when this data is skewed. The swimming regulations have not even been released, but you're already saying you know what they are. We had one semi-water emergency in 2007. We only used water for like two days, but that was a so-called emergency. We lose more than that in a quarter of a year. We, what's being talked about here, and has been talked about at other meetings, is this water isn't even about us. This is, the term they keep using is regionalization. They want to make us some hub for water and sell it to other people. Just be forewarned, especially you people that want money for the schools. We are, water treatment plant is not set up to be a regional hub. And we are going to be asked, right now, they won't tell you this, we're going to be asked to make, upgrade that system to make it be able to carry water for all these people, and we're going to be paying for it. This isn't cheaper, and someday you're going to regret doing that. I hear stories too about, you know, breweries were supposed to come here, and we didn't have the water. And, you know, I called up the brewery, and they said that that was not the reason why they didn't come here. But anyways, I think this water is going to be so expensive, and it seems fine and dandy right now. But when you get these huge bills, you're going to remember this town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nardone. Ma'am?
Alexis Christopher, 435 Captain Ames. I have a question, Mr. Moderator. I keep hearing about Spring Street, but it comes from the same aquifer. So are we actually, can we actually increase our water usage?
Mr. Minugian?
It's a very good question. The aquifers are regulated by the same agencies. They're very similar. DCR is next to Spring Street, DCR is next to Howe Street. We anticipate, since DCR put these restrictions on Howe Street are current, that they'll put similar restrictions on Spring Street.
Okay, and the second thing is a comment. We need to be careful about being shortsighted. I lived in Santa Barbara, California during their last drought, and they built a desalinization plant. Took them 16 months. It was online for four months, and the drought was over, and they didn't like the taste of the water. So they decommissioned it, they gutted it, and they sold the incisive arrows. Now they're trying to build another one.
Thank you, Ms. Salat.
Let's see if I can do this this time. Is that all right now?
It's good.
All right. Judith Salat, 29 Meeting House Path. I have a couple of questions that are lingering from the past. One of the things that concerns me is when Joel said that, I think it was Stoughton, that the water usage increased 30%. I get concerned, with the kind of discussions we've had tonight, about complacency. If we think we've got it, we're going to use it. And so that's a concern. The other concern that I have is that, again, I'm not, I'm not anti-growth, but I think that we need to guide it. I worry that if it seems easy to build here, I know that we can't say no, even if it's not easy. But, you know, it's, if it seems like it's going to be less of a hassle to build one place than another, then I'm concerned that we haven't done some of our research. I was amazed at what Kathy Rooney said. That was another way of conserving that I hadn't thought of. I just hope we do not stop looking. We're going to have to spend time, money, energy, and manpower to figure out how to do this. I don't want us not doing, putting that into, into looking for alternatives. And the other question, and the last one, is, David, do, are there other, the other towns that you had up there that are unpartial, do they share a reservoir with another town? I mean, we share with Hopkinton. And how much, I mean, they've got legacy going. How does that affect us and our use of the water?
So how does, are sharing the reservoir with Hopkinton have an impact, if at all?
We have an intermunicipal agreement with Hopkinton. So there are other communities. The Dedham-Westwood Water District is both Dedham and Westwood, so it's two communities sharing water resources.
Thank you. Ms. Greenstein?
Jane Greenstein, 5 Sandstone Way. My concern is in decision-making that's based on wishful thinking. It seems like we're, a lot of people who are against this are wishing that Ashland was the community it was in the past, at the size it was in the past, with a reality that is not the reality that we have now. The town is bigger. It is. We might not want it to be, but it is. And we have a water shortage that none of the other communities around us have. That is a fact. We are not in California where everybody's in the same boat. Ashland has water shortages that are not representative of the region. And I think that is a fact, and we need to make decisions based upon facts. A second fact is that people are going to keep building homes in Ashland regardless of what our restrictions are. But business development is going to be tied to water availability. And we have had many conversations in town about the importance of our financial future not falling on the backs of residential, but building our, our business development. We can't do that if we don't have enough water. So I ask people to think about those facts when they make their decision on this vote, not on waving a magic wand to have a time travel back into the past, or fear about Ashland losing its control as if everything can be done in-house. I just really ask people to think about that and to vote in favor of this article.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Lisa Ulliario, 61 Independence Lane. Quick question. First, the wording, I just want to be clear, we can actually enter into an agreement without coming back to town meeting once this, if this is approved. Is that correct?
Mr. Skiabi?
Can you state your question one more time?
The question was, she was asking whether or not we can enter into an agreement, well, we, the Board of Selectmen, without coming back to town meeting based upon the wording of the article.
We would come back to town meeting. It would make no sense to enter into an agreement with MWRA prior to this town meeting making decision about funding an actual connection, right? Because if, if you entered into an agreement with MWRA and started paying the money before this body decided about whether to make a connection, that just wouldn't be fiscally responsible. So that's why we said early on in Mr. Mignani's statement is that the town is not going to move forward with an actual connection until we build a policy, build a funding around that, and come back to town meeting for an actual vote on whether the town wants to physically make that connection. And then we would move forward to the next step for, you know, application and payment of fees.
Okay. So you would come back to town meeting before any agreement was made, even though it says that you would enter, it's okay to enter into an agreement?
Well, any agreement that had any funding tied to it. We may have conversations with MWRA, but not the expenditure of fundings and payment of fees and that sort of thing.
And not just the town paying fees, but like us paying water fees? It wouldn't...
To MWRA, that's correct.
Right, okay. Second question is, would this distract any attention to current supply problems, like the millions of gallons that go unaccounted for? Would this take our attention away from fixing those problems? Like, are we just adding more water that might get lost?
Mr. Minugian?
It's a very good question. The lost water really is a distribution problem, and this is a supply. So we're looking at it as two separate issues, and we'll continue to focus on that.
And then the last question is that this is, the MWRA solution would allow extra supply of water, but we would still treat that. Is that correct?
Mr. Minugian?
One of the things we pay for is it will be fully treated for us.
So fully, sorry, fully treated the way that we currently treat it. I'm mostly concerned with fluoride levels. That's one of the things that, it's different in Ashland than in other places. So would we continue to have the same fluoride levels, and would I have to continue to give my children the same level supplements, that kind of thing?
Mr. Minugian?
Fluoride levels may vary slightly. Our background fluoride is .2 to .3 parts per million. That's what we see now. MWRA currently treats to one part per million, although the regulations from the federal government have now identified a lower maximum, and that'll allow MWRA to drop that to .7 parts per million. So assuming we're using a quarter MWRA water, we might see a jump from .3 to maybe .45 parts per million.
Then I guess the only other thing that I would request is if, if this does get approved, and we do come back, and we do enter into an agreement, that there is some education plan for people that might be providing supplements to fluoride or anything else that we treat the water with.
Thank you. Sir?
Name is Kajina Reina from 41 Thomas Road, Ashland. I am also the Conservation Commission. And I feel that the water is a precious commodity that we all know, and then it's a basic thing for people to sustain. That's important first before you make a sustainability plan in the town. So we need to survive through, so water is essential. So nobody should think twice about it having a separate source for it. And I also understand that the expenses are now just only papers and manpower that's being spent on writing the application form, so that should not be a big issue for the town. And there is not, not much money is being spent in putting the application through. And having said that, and also the problems with the Spring Street have been explained by speakers before here. So I think that what's worth in the hand is worth, you know, it's better than two in the bush. So let's take the MWRA, which is available to us. It's only in a paper agreement right now. It's not going to be implemented until next meeting comes in here, and we vote on it. So I certainly recommend this MWRA connection. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I get to you, Mr. Tony, I closed the microphones about 10 minutes ago. Not the last word, Mr. Hannah, but close to it.
Well, I guess, I just have to say, and I will talk to the audience more than you folks, but you guys have heard me so many times, now you can probably recite my story.
I think they can in the audience, too, Mr. Hannah.
I just want you folks to know that all the jibber-jibber that's going on here about who's got the most money, who's paying the most money, who isn't going to, we don't know. We do know that the MWRA will charge you 1.2 to 1.6 billion, and that's a guess, to allow us to enter into their system. And the 1.2 and the 1.6 is only how much water we want. They'll charge you for the water, however it is, but you just tell them how much you want. Now, that is all that we know. We don't know the operating costs... We don't know the operating cost estimated for that period of time, the circumstances that are, now President Lee Dear Island is running out of room. And MWRA is not saying a hell of a lot about that, because that's going to be a huge reconstruction process. And that's going to affect all the members on the MWRA if you're on it. So I just want you to know, there are so many things out there that you have to understand and we have to understand before we make any vote on this. Now, if these guys want to drag it out again till next year, that's fine with me, but let's make something done in that period of time. Let's get a study group together and let one figure out what MWRA really is and find out what we can do with a body of water that'll be ours. It provides as much as the Hopkins Reservoir provides on a daily basis, that'll all be engineered and proved. And all we've got to do is we have our own private, now we have two wells that some doubled what we draw now. And I don't think that's too bad for a little community who runs their own water, rather than being told by MWRA about two months from now that they just jumped the rate about 50 cents per, and we have to eat it without even a discussion. So please, please pay attention to this.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. And the last comment on this article?
Janet Platt, 11 Rodman Road. In the 1980s, I drove a Ford Pinto, and I had to carry a jug of water so that every time I got into the car, I would fill up the radiator and drive away. And then I'd, in the winter, bring my jug in to wherever I went so it wouldn't freeze, so that when I left, I could fill up the radiator and go. And now I'm older and wiser, and I get that I needed a new radiator, not more water for my radiator. I'm not saying we're leaking water like that, but I think that this is a distraction from some things that we could be doing that we're not doing. I think we need to focus on recharging the wells, about capturing our runoff in our sewer water and putting it back into our system, stop sending it to the harbor. I think we need to put more energy into conservation. I know I'm pretty unpopular on the extent I would go to to conserve, but I can live with that. I think we could do things to fix leaks and upgrade our systems so that we are worthy of the MWRA water. And I think we need to exhaust all local options, and I know we're getting there. But I don't like the MWRA any more than Mr. Crowe, and I just think we could do some more before I'm ready for this. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mr. Miniani, to summarize it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to answer a couple of comments that were made earlier. Ashland Reservoir is not owned by the Town of Ashland. It's under the rules and sanctions of the DEP and DCR. Okay, that's just one. We're talking about wastewater and keeping the water in our current aquifer. Well, there are discussions, and they're looking at long-term plans for a wastewater treatment plant. That's probably nine years down the road. And you're looking at a cost of $50 million, and that's now, or more, but nine years from now, it could be more, just to retain the water so that it doesn't go to Deer Island. It stays in our aquifer. Now, Mr. Hannah and I have had many, many conversations with Ben Montenegro, who is not with us anymore, but we've talked about Spring Street well. Many a conversation. And we agreed a long time ago, when doing the research that I've done, and it's talking to Mr. Menugian, that is not a new source of water. It's one aquifer. Ashland has one aquifer. There are two reservoirs, Hopkinton Reservoir and Ashland Reservoir, but it's under the same aquifer. So that's not a new water source, folks. It's the same source, just two different locations. One's usable and one isn't. The reason why the other one isn't available to us is because we don't own the land around us, DCR does. They've already told us. Forget it. It's not, it's not something that's within our purview to even try to look at. 25 years ago, it certainly was, and those people had the power to do it, waited too down long, and we lost that opportunity. And Jim, I hope you agree that we lost that opportunity. Pipings were there, we did what we had to do, we were given a grace period to use that facility, and we lost that ability to do it. Why we lost it, what the reasons were, I don't know. I was a young man way back then. I wasn't thinking about water.
Jim, we've...
So...
Mr. Hannah? Mr. Hannah? Mr. Hannah?
So, and to answer a question about swimming, those regulations are drafted and they're posted on the DEP website. So if there's any questions about what swimming means and what their regulations are, go to the DEP website, and you can read about them. And they're drafted, but they're posted, but they're only drafts at this point, so you'll get somewhat of an idea. Are they going to change within the next voting period? I don't know. But at least they're there, and those are guidelines. And we're using those guidelines to make the assessments. Those are the same guidelines that the DEP and the MWRA came to this town and said, we need to see that you people stop trying to conserve water and find another source. And if you don't do that, then your cost of emergency tie-ins with the MWRA, the costs are going to go up, because you're not making a concerted effort to find another source or save water. So basically, yeah, I'm not all for the MWRA, but right now, they're the only pool in town. Okay? So I hope that answers some of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miniani. We will now proceed to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. Opposed? That passes. Article 19, and for those of you wondering, there are no plans for a third night of town I think too much fun is just, you know, against the law. Article 19, amend the zoning bylaw, senior residential housing, sponsored by the Planning To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 282 zoning bylaw, the Town of Ashland bylaws, by making the changes indicated in the table in the warrant. Just to be clear, there's a Scribner's error in the table. The table in your handbook, under the section CO, says, I'm sorry, I apologize. The table says SP. That SP should read PB. It's just a mistake in the way it was referenced. So in your handbook, it says SP, 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 SP. That should be PB, 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 PB. That doesn't affect anything, it's just a mistake in the construct of the article. Or taking the action relative there, too, the Finance Committee defers recommendation of town meeting. Mr. Strasberg?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Nat Strasberg, Town Planner. The purpose of this proposed zoning bylaw change is simply to rectify a clerical error in the Ashland Zoning Codes Table of Uses, which you see in front of you. The table shows that senior residential community developments can be built by right, as indicated by the letter Y, in the Res A, Res B, Highway Commerce, and Downtown Commerce zoning districts. This is, in fact, a clerical error. Section 7.2, which is the senior residential community portion of the zoning bylaw, points out that such developments, in order to be built, require the granting of a special permit, not a site plan review approval, which is indicated by the letter Y. Therefore, the proposal here is that the Y listings be replaced with SP listings to indicate that a special...
PB.
Excuse me? PB. Scribner's error. PB.
We don't want to come back and fix yet another mistake?
Fair enough. To indicate that a special permit is needed from the Planning Board, PB. Thank you.
Now, before you get up, Mr. Efron, this is fixing a mistake. It's a clerical error. Is there any discussion on this particular portion? We do have a substitute motion that's coming, but I want to address this particular, what's... See, it's getting late. I screwed up again. Mr. Strasberg, would you please give us the Planning Board's recommendation?
Yes, of course. The recommendation from the Planning Board is that town meeting approve this proposed amendment.
Thank you. So before we get to the substitute motion, I just want to make sure there's no discussion on this article, which fixes a clerical error. Seeing none, besides being pleased, we'll move on to the substitute motion. Mr. Efron?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jerry Efron, 336 Cedar Street. I've submitted a proposed amendment to this Article 19 prior to the start of last Wednesday's town meeting, which I'd submitted for review by Town Council to make sure it was in order. I also submitted it to the Town Manager, the Board of Selectmen, and the Town Planner on behalf of the Planning Board. I believe that all of these people do not object to my bringing this amendment for consideration by town meeting. Nat indicated his amendment was necessary to correct a mistake in the bylaw. I agree, and I support that amendment. Mine is designed to correct an additional mistake in the bylaw that was done when the bylaw was recodified in 2009. I'm here tonight, not in my capacity as a private citizen, but as an attorney representing the Green Company, a development company. Since late last year, they've been involved in designing a residential project for property at the corner of Elliot and Chestnut Street, also known as the 4-H property. This amendment, for simplicity purposes, is designed to propose one additional change to the bylaw that Mr. Strasberg discussed. It simply asks, under the line CO, which is for the Commercial Office District, to cross out the N indicating no, and substitute PB, indicating that senior residential community would also be permitted in this district, but only upon a required approval of a special permit by the Planning Board. First slide, please. This is the only CO zoning district in the entire town. The zone line is up in the left-hand upper corner, has that little square in it, which happens to be the existing 4-H house. This parcel is one piece of legal property. It is approximately 40 acres. The CO parcel comprises only 25% of the property. My client is under a binding purchase and sale agreement with the owner to purchase that property for residential development. Prior to the May 2004 town meeting, that zone line did not appear. The entire parcel was zoned RA, single-family residential. It had been purchased by the current owner from the 4-H in July of 2000. Then, as now, a senior residential community in age-restricted development for over 55 people was permitted in the RA district. Senior residential communities, of which there are only three in the Town of Ashland, share some characteristics that make them different from single-family developments. They have no children in the developments. They are condominium developments, meaning that there are no public ways, no public maintenance requirement of infrastructure. Everything is private. And there are required set-asides for open space in order to have these developments approved. That required set-aside is a minimum of 30% of the parcel. The age restriction and private ownership of roads and infrastructure combined make these developments very tax-friendly as compared to other single-family development. They simply have less expenses on the town nature in order to support this type of growth. Prior to the 2004 zone change, even though the property was zoned residential, it was not used for residential. In fact, it was never used for residential. That 9.79 acres, in fact, had buildings on it that were used for nonprofit organizations and offices, for a preschool, and then in 2003, for the temporary town hall, when the town hall was under construction. And they leased that property for about 18 months. The purpose of the 2004 zoning amendment was very limited. It was to suggest that after the expiration of the lease with the town, that the owner of the property would be able to still utilize those buildings to expand the use for commercial tenants. That was it. Nothing else. The town left, that zoning bylaw passed. When it passed in 2004, it still allowed senior residential communities to be built. In other words, it took everything that was there before and simply added to it. For a number of reasons, no commercial uses were ever made, and in fact, the owner demolished all of the buildings on that property some time ago. There's nothing there at the present time except slab, undeveloped property, and woods. When the zoning code was recodified in 2009, for one reason or another, the CO district that formerly allowed the SRC disappeared, and that use was omitted. My client simply is asking me to propose this amendment to restore this use the way it was when the original bylaw was changed in 2004. But it does so for a very, very specific purpose. The Green Company's plans that have been basically set out for a couple of months now, about six, have been developed with the existing bylaw in mind. In other words, they were going to propose senior residential community on this side in here, and 10 single-family homes in that corner. That's not what they wanted to do, but they didn't want to come before town meeting at that particular point without any plans and face the questions that should come to any zone change when something is not locked in. Since that time, a lot of progress has been made. A development agreement was signed with the town that limited the amount of units up there to 10 single-family homes, 92 SRC units. In addition, water allocation and sewer allocation was made, and monies were paid to the town to do some of the INI work, the leak detection work that Mr. Menugian has talked about in another context tonight. Due to some very productive meetings with the surrounding neighbors from Prospect Heights and other neighborhoods, these plans have been modified two or three or four times. So that as of the last iteration, open space had been significantly expanded, so that the entire area to the corner of Elliot and Prospect Street, Elliot and Chestnut Street, excuse me, which is across from Warren Woods, a piece of land near and dear to the town, has been left open. In addition, there's significant buffer zones around the property and an additional chunk open space to the north of the property. All of this open space, including the 4-H property, will be available to the town in perpetuity for conservation purposes for nothing. So why are we here at the last minute? It's not good to come at the last minute for a zoning change. We're here because on a walk of the property eight days ago, for the purpose of finally setting the wetlands line that determines where you can construct in the field, a new and unforeseen wetland area, not shown on prior plans or flaggings, was discovered. It's unfortunately in a place that would likely force the redesign of what has been submitted for roadway and units, and would, if adopted, force the potential relocation of the roadway and units further out into what is desired to be open space. Yes, the developer could comply. The final result would not be of the same quality for the town. This is a concept plan which is drawn by the engineers after discovery of the wetland area. It assumes passage of this amendment and an ability to use the whole property for senior residential community. The legal requirements for the SRC simply allow for more flexibility than a cluster development. If this bylaw is passed, the developer will pull back even further from the corner and keep the development even further away from Warren Woods. It will maintain the areas of large open space. And it will also provide, if in fact a permit is approved, all of the other attributes that I've tried to do a reasonable job of pointing out thus far. What limitations will govern this project? The special permit requirement of the town will now apply, as Mr. Strasberg said, to all permits for senior residential communities. The bylaw so provided, putting it in the use table clarifies that. Accordingly, what happens tonight is not a product approval in any way. It simply permits the product to go forward in a way that is the most favorable for the municipality. In addition, the developer is bound by the terms of a written development agreement regarding providing for the payment of town sewer, which serves as a limitation on the development. Now, instead of 92 SRC units and 10 single-family homes, the developer has signed a binding agreement limiting it to no more than 93 total SRC units and no single-family homes. I hope town meeting will see this as something positive and support the amendment. I'll do my best to answer any questions. If there are questions to the town, I'm sure there are appropriate people who can respond. If there are questions for my client, the Green Company... If there are questions for my client, the Green Company, my client's president and owners are in the room, and with permission of the moderator to speak, they will also answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Effren. So there's a motion on the floor to amend the motion of Article 19 to add PB to the table under the CO section, zoning section. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Crowe.
Preston Crowe, 41 Rockwood Drive, also a member of the Planning Board. Everything that he said as far as the process on this, the history, I believe, is correct. I'm just a little upset that this has come here as an amendment on what was going to be just a housekeeping change and turned it into something substantive when the right process would have been to come at the beginning, when they were first looking at this, and say, "We'd like to have this zoning change," and it could have gone through the Planning Board hearing process with the whole Planning Board weighing in on what they thought of it and all of that. That said, I'm going to vote for this. From town meeting's perspective, zoning is where we look at what proper land use is. And looking at this property, setting aside what the developer has promised, because that promise isn't binding necessarily, town meeting doesn't know what all the documents are and isn't really a party to any of those. Once those office buildings were torn down, the whole justification for even having the commercial office zone in our zoning really went away. And probably the best thing to have done would be at that time to have removed that zone and added this back to the rez- map, which would have, in effect, done the same thing that they're asking for. But that's really... So I'm going to vote for this. I can understand people saying they don't like the process and voting against it if they feel that way, but that's where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to get confirmation that that small parcel up there is the only CO zoning in town?
Mr. Strasburg.
Confirmed.
Yes. And then my next question is, you know, we just heard sort of the general feeling of at least one member of the Planning Board. Is there any other town departments that have a concern with this proposed amendment?
Mrs. Skiaby.
Do we have any concerns?
Yes. All right, thank you. You said "no"? I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you.
No.
It was short, so I figured it was "no." Ms. Rooney.
Kathy Rooney, 136 Fawn Street. On the face of it, it sounds great, but I'm concerned that this is another pretty picture painted at town meeting and that reality becomes Quonset Huts, like over Avenue of the Americas. So I just want some assurance that this is going to be as advertised. Thank you.
Mr. Skiaby.
I think where you'll see that is when they come before the Planning Board for their special permit with their designs, if you're familiar with the Green Companies and what they do, I think you'd be very, very pleased.
Carl Hackinson, 346 Chestnut Street. And I'm the Chair of the Land Stewardship Committee and also a member of the Conservation Commission. And Mr. Effren and members of the Green Company, as well as the landowner, have worked with me in my capacity as the Chair of the Land Stewardship Committee to make sure that this area was developed in a manner that protects the ecological and aesthetic and historical integrity of not just 466 Chestnut Street, but Warren Woods as well. They've been very upfront, they've been very open, and they have had several meetings with me personally, several meetings with people that I brought along with me. I'm also on the Conservation Commission, so I know why this came late to town meeting. The wetland area was a little bit more extensive than anticipated, and without this amendment, they would have to drop back to an earlier plan where all of those single-family homes were impeding in the area of the field. During the meetings, we spoke with the representatives from the Green Company about several things, about making changes to protect the integrity of the Wildlife Corridor, to protect the wetlands, to address the number of units, and to protect the historical and scenic vista that one has from Warren Woods looking towards 466 Chestnut Street. They were very amenable to all of those changes. The comments were consistent across the board, and the representatives came back to us with several plans. Each one was better than the previous. This plan actually is the best plan, and it's ironic that it's a last-minute plan, but it's an improvement over the plan that I saw two weeks ago that was much improved over the plan that we saw before that. So I would urge you to support this. I think it will be good for the town. I think it will be good for that part of the town, again aesthetically, historically, and ecologically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel.
Thank you. Joel Arbeitman. I... It sounds like a lot of good effort has been made here to preserve the natural beauty of that area, especially in that this is very visible from the Warren Woods parcel that the town purchased. I'm just not that clear on what we're looking at here. Like, I thought in a previous slide, we saw what appeared to be total green space horizontally all the way from left to right, from Chestnut Street all the way along Elliott down to the right-hand end, and now I see quite a cluster of housing there. So I guess my question is, was that the change that was necessitated by the finding of wetlands? And what are we going to see as we look at this parcel from Warren Woods? Is there a plan for... If those are residences there coming down to Elliott Street, is there a plan to have screening, or are we going to be looking at a lot of the senior housing that would be going in there? I'm just not clear what this is going to look like, looking out, say, from the Warren Woods parcel. Thanks.
Mr. Effren, you have your hand up? No, you didn't, but... Okay.
There's a 50-foot buffer zone running down Elliott Street, Joel. So there would be nothing from the corner of Chestnut and Elliott, past the 4-H house, past the wetlands. Yes, going that way. Until you get to that cluster down there, and then there is a 50-foot buffer along Elliott, but no entrance or exit onto Elliott Street. There is also another, as you can see, another open space down in the thumb area, down there towards Prospect Street. But, you know, when there are no leaves on the trees, I'm sure you're going to be able to see those houses from Elliott Street, but it... When there are leaves on the trees, it will probably look just as scenic as it does today. The rest of the view from Warren Woods, where the shed is, looking back towards that field, should not change radically and would actually be enhanced by this plan versus the previous plan, because those houses that you're seeing, that would now be allowed to be senior residences or single-family houses, and because they were set on larger lots, will push back further towards the field. Can I answer your question?
Thank you. Ms. Sulman, last comment.
Robert Sulman, 28 Woodrich Lane. I'm on the Open Space Committee, but I'm speaking for myself because this was not discussed by the whole committee, although some of us did know that this was in the works. And I just want to say that the preservation of the field, the buffer zone, the preservation of the Wildlife Corridor, and certainly the preservation of the wetlands, and the excellent sort of planning here for this are all consistent with things in the Open Space Plan and values that we support. So I'm glad to see so much thought going into a development.
Thank you. As announced, that was the last comment on this. We will move to vote on the substitute motion. If the substitute motion passes, we will then return to the main motion. If the substitute motion fails, we'll go back to the main motion as presented. Substitute motion will require a simple majority to pass. Voting yes to substitute motion will just add PB under CO in your program. Voting no will not add PB. All those in favor of the substitute motion, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. Opposed? That passes, but not unanimously. Moving on to the now main motion, which includes PB. All those... This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the now substitute motion, please raise your green cards. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Onto Article 20. Amend the zoning bylaw industrial district uses sponsored by the Planning Board. To revise Chapter 282 of the Town of Ashland zoning bylaws, Table of Principal Uses Regulations, Business or Professional Office. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter 282 of the Town of Ashland zoning bylaw by making the changes indicated in the table in the warrant or taking any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. The change will provide new opportunities for tax revenue by allowing current commercial space that is zoned for industrial use only to also allow for business or professional use. Mr. Strasburg, and while you're up here, why don't you give us the Planning Board's recommendation before I screw up again?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
The Planning Board voted to recommend that town meeting approve Warren Article 20. Again, the purpose of this proposed zoning bylaw change is to permit business or professional office uses in Ashland's industrial zone by right. That means, as stated earlier, that the use could be constructed if a site plan review approval is granted. Currently, business or professional office uses are prohibited in the industrial zone.
Thank you, Mr. Strasburg. To allow discussion on any of the motion, the Chapter 282 zoning bylaw, the Town of Ashland bylaws, Section 3.0 Use Regulations, Table of Principal Use Regulations, D, Commercial Uses, Business or Professional Office, shall be amended as printed in the warrant. Do I have such a motion? Thank you, Preston. Discussion, Mr. Tisoni.
Like I told the players, it'd be simple. Any good thing that happens here, that might bring some businesses, commercial whatever, will help the other side that should get the businesses coming again.
Thank you, Mr. Tisoni.
Catherine Jersey, 11 Rodman Road. I have a question, I guess, through the moderator for Nat or the Planning Board. It kind of seems to make sense that you'd want business or professional, that that might be not more of a nuisance than industrial, but why would we jump to just yes and not consider a Planning Board special permit if we were changing that?
Okay. Mr. Strasburg?
It's consistent with the rest of the districts.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, and having received the Planning Board's report, we move on to a vote. This will require a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. And opposed? That passes unanimously. Article 21, grant easement to NSTAR sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant an easement to NSTAR its successors are assigned for purposes of installing, maintaining, and repairing traffic boxes and subgrade piping in and over a portion of the property located off of Prospect Street within an existing easement held by NSTAR and recorded in the Middlesex South District Registry of Beads at Book 7772, page 162, and shown as district regulator intake stations dated October 22, 2014, drawn by WBH and on file with the Office of Town Clerk, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any documents or instructions necessary to effect said easement upon such terms as they deem to be in the best interest of the town or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers its recommendation to town meeting. Mr. Monaco.
So this is a request by NSTAR to relocate what is now an underground vault across the street to make it an above-ground vault. I believe there's a representative here from NSTAR that can speak to this. Any technical questions? But this is a process because the easement has to be granted by town meeting, so... But basically, they're having a lot of problems with the underground vault, and they want to move it, and there are other above-ground vaults within the community already.
Thank you, Mr. Monaco.
Ms. Monaco.
Ms. Mead.
I just want to provide a clarification. There is already an existing transmission gas maintenance easement on the same place, but it doesn't give them enough rights to install the above-ground vault, and so they're expanding the existing easement rights.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, we won't hear from NSTAR. If there is discussion, we may. Mr. Rush is getting up. Mr. Rush to the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In looking at the maps that included this, the new easement, it made it look like we're talking about private property, so I guess I was wondering, how is it that the town would have to grant the easement?
So the question, Ms. Mead?
It's not private property. It's actually town property that was part of a subdivision that was created a number of years ago.
Thank you.
Ms. Salit.
Judith Salit, 29 Meeting House Path. This... I may be sounding obtuse, but is NSTAR still NSTAR for this?
I didn't hear the question.
Is NSTAR still NSTAR?
NSTAR is ever sourced, but it says its successor's not assigned, so we're legally covered.
Oh, okay.
Can we have a motion in a second?
Told you guys it's getting late. To allow discussion, I'll entertain the motion I should have entertained three minutes ago. This printed in your handbooks. And Preston's going to second it. So now that we're all legal-like, we're not going to undo that. Again, apologies. It gets late and tired up here, too. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will require a two-thirds majority since this is grant of an easement. All those in favor? Thank you. And opposed? That passes unanimously. Article 22 was addressed the last time we were here. Article 23, Regional Fire Department merger sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to recommend that the Board of Selectmen enter into a regional fire agreement with the creation of special legislation. If the Town of Hopkinton will pass any vote or take any action relative thereto, the Finance Committee recommends that the town take no action on this article. Ms. Greaves.
The town, in conjunction with Hopkinton, received a grant to research, fully investigate, and determine the ability to do a joint fire department between our two towns. After two-plus years of meetings, it was determined that this is not feasible at this time, but we do have to have this on the warrant and have an official vote to close out the grant. I'm sorry, not an official vote, but we did need to have it on the warrant, but our recommendation is to take no action at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that town meeting take no action on this article. Is there a second? Seeing no bee lines to the microphones, this will require a simple majority. All in favor of the motion, the town meeting take no action on this article? Thank you. And opposed? That passes unanimously. Now for our final course for the evening. Article 24, Citizen Petition, amend the Town Bylaw sponsored by a Citizen Petition by Julie Nardone at AL. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter 42 of the General Bylaws entitled Capital Improvement Committee as follows. Amend Section 42.1, which currently reads, "The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Capital Improvement Committee consisting of seven members, one of which will be the Public Facility Director," replacing that with, "The Board of Selectmen shall appoint a Capital Improvement Committee consisting of five registered voters of the Town of Ashland here and after town, none of whom is a town employee or town official either elected or appointed or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote not to approve Article 24. Capital Improvement Committee recommends projects that will benefit the town as demonstrated in the successful execution of the FY15 capital program. Having town employees and/or elected officials, i.e. the town manager and public facilities manager, who have a comprehensive understanding of the town's needs on this committee is critical to the successful execution and efficiency of the capital program." Ms. Nardone.
Okay. A democracy requires checks and balances. Without those, we can slip into a dictatorship. That's one of the reasons the federal government has three branches, the judicial, executive, and legislative. Local government also needs checks and balances, and for some of you who have tried to do certain things in town, you may have observed that local government has very little oversight, and that's something that people don't understand. It's basically just us here at town meeting... It's basically just us here at town meeting trying to legislate checks and balances. Now, this is a simple article to introduce the voters to the conflict of interest law, specifically the appearance of conflict of interest, which is Mass. General Law 268A, And that law basically is appearance of conflict acting in a manner that would make a reasonable person think you can be improperly influenced is prohibited. It's important to understand that you don't, you're not necessarily doing anything wrong. You may be innocent as a lamb, but you could still give off the appearance of conflict of interest. And that, and this whole talk about conflict of interest and the appearance of conflict of interest is something we don't really talk about in this town when it comes to committees. People whisper under their breath, but nobody really comes out and says anything. So this is just an attempt to get, like, a conversation going about this. Okay, so this is about the capital improvement committee. Currently, there are five members, three of them are town employees, who each report to each other, so we have succession of people reporting to each other culminating with the town manager. The audience for this particular committee, from what I read in the minutes that were available, and I will say there are no minutes available for 2015 as of today, which was very concerning. The audience would be direct reports of the town manager, say, the chief of police, DPW director, or assistant town manager. I mean, that's what I've seen. For any of us who've worked at a company, I think you may or may not agree that you might want to do things that your boss wants you to do because you may want to keep your job, whatever. Now, this started out with the Department of Revenue, which isn't the State Ethics Commission, but I did start out with them. And again, and I also spoke to them again today, and capital projects should be in a warrant, not a budget line item, but actually in the warrant. There was some confusion at the town meeting. So...
Ms. Nardone, you started off by saying it's a simple article.
No, a simple introduction. I said a simple introduction.
But the introduction has gone on for quite some time?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so we talk a lot about, in this town, about agreeing community, but we never talk about being an ethical community, and I think that's really important. And this article encourages us to be more ethical when we put our committees together. Looked at some other towns, and most of the towns around us do not allow any town employees on the capital improvement committee. A lot of the towns don't allow any town employees, period, because they said of the way that it looks. For example, if you're a DP, you work for the DPW, you would not be allowed to be on the Public Works Commission, but you could be, say, on the council on aging. Other towns, if someone is, exerts significant influence in policymaking, they also cannot be on town committees. So anyways, look forward to hearing what you have to say about this article.
Having no motion, I will entertain a motion that can either be to approve the Finance Committee's recommendation or some other motion. Do I have such a motion? And what is it?
What's the Finance Committee's recommendation?
There's a motion to move the Finance Committee's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. The operative motion on all the floors, the Finance Committee's recommendation to not approve Article 24. Discussion.
Hi, my name is Jacob Guggenheim. First of all, I know we now have a significantly smaller representation from the town because it's 11:45 and 10:45, but I thank everyone. I am the-
We're still here at 11:45.
I am the chair of the Capital Improvements Committee. I oversee the Capital Improvements Committee. I am not a worker for the town. I actually worked for the state prior to that. I worked in corporate, so I know both realms. And I think I said this, if you were here in my original speech, and sorry if I continue, this is, one, important to me, and, two, as the chair of the Capital Improvements Committee, I know a lot about the Capital Improvements Committee. There's a lot of stuff in the Capital Improvements Committee that other committees don't have to deal with. For example, HVAC systems and different kinds of asphalt, roofs. These are all specific knowledge that I, nor anyone on the committee, has time to really all of a sudden learn all the information that people who've been working in this town for 20 years, 30 years, have. They know the HVAC systems. They know the capital requirements we need, and then we get to suggest and bring our suggestions to the selectmen. Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, some of that stuff, and the Finance Committee. We don't say, "These are what we're going to do, write a check." We have, these are our recommendations. And agreed, there's five people. Ideally, we have seven. Before you take three members out of this committee, we've had two spots open for a year, and one spot for longer than a year, and one spot, oh, and now two as due to a recommendation, that we haven't been able to fill. So by chopping the committee further down, we still don't have anyone else. So if you're looking for, you know, more conversation and more transparency and all that stuff, coming down to a two-person committee isn't going to help. Like, I, most committees are allowed to have town, they, there are so many towns in this state, you can find towns that do everything. It's amazing. The town next to us is the largest town in the country because it doesn't want to become a city. Like, you can find examples from towns that do all things. And state ethics or general ethics, I have to take that, last year I took the ethics three times because I'm on a board of advisors, which means I had to take one, I have to take my state annual one, and then when, for the capital improvements every year, I have to take, it's the same one three times. I've memorized it. I can tell you when there's going to be a conflict of interest, and there isn't one. And the knowledge that we gain from having people with experience on the town is so much greater than any possible inkling of how we're going to look to other towns. You talk about, you know, we're Ashland, we get, we should be proud, and we should be in Ashland. Who cares what we look like then? Anyway, sorry I ranted. I'm generally against ranting. I'll take any other questions.
Mr. DeSoni.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That took part of my thinking, the other part. And in all respect to you, Mr. Moderator, I want to ask the Finance Committee, I want to ask them their reasons why you want to be voted down, and not, not as a group, but as a city.
The Finance Committee's already expressed its opinion. The vote, I believe, was unanimous. Is that correct?
Yes.
The vote of the Finance Committee was unanimous.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. DeSoni?
Yeah, there will be.
Will it be soon?
Ever see a turtle do a 500-yard dash? Okay, I'm sorry, I take that back. Slowly back in the shell. I would like to say to the moderator, I apologize for my actions over tonight at town meeting. It was inappropriate, not worthy for my personality, and it was, it would not happen, and I thank you for the guidance, and the words that we left with each other was meant to compromise, and it's what this town should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSoni. Sir?
Yes, Steve Morgan, 136 Concord Street. I wanted to get up and, I'm not, I'm not involved with this citizens petition, I didn't sign it, but I did, I did comment the other night on the request for $10,000 capital, you know, central, centrally-
Stabilization.
Recovery fund.
Stabilization fund.
I understand from the chair that it's to be used to, now to recover money that wasn't spent. I made some comments the other night about capital projects and how they should work. I have, I have extensive experience in, in business with engineering, I have an engineering degree, and certainly if there's a need for members, I'd be happy to volunteer. I'm new to the town, but I'd be happy to volunteer for, for this. I, I've done lots of construction and engineering work in my career. I, I am very concerned from the integrity point of view. Again, I wasn't involved in this when it was created, but, you know, it concerns me when people are not in the roles that they belong in, and when you pay an employee, and employees of the town are paid to contribute to these processes. You know, Tony, as the town manager, you know, he's got all of his people to marshal, and he, he should be getting that input up to the committee. You don't need those people on the committee. All those people are employed by the town and are advisors, and should be providing reports to this committee through the proper channel. So I don't see any need for those employees to be on this particular committee. I do have a concern about it. And as a final comment, I, I live on Concord Street, I'm near the, the middle, the middle school, and, you know, I, I go over there with my daughter, and I was very disappointed to see the capital condition of that school just as an observer. I'm not sure where that fits in the capital committee, but I, I can tell you that, you know, it's very clear to me, being fairly new to the town, that the capital needs of this town are not being met. Maybe they're not understood, I'm not sure what the issues are, but, you know, this, this should be handled in a much more professional, standard, financial manner, and, and, you know, again, those are my comments. I would suggest that we approve this, get appropriately qualified people on the committee, and not stay focused on this issue about employees or non-employees. I don't think we need employees on public committees. We need members, and those members need to be supported by the employees of the town. Thank you.
Sir, I'm going to ask you to just hang out in the front row, because depending upon how this comes out, you may be taking up on your offer. Jacob, make sure you watch where you're sitting.
Hi, my name's Philip Williams, 24 Prankhurst Lane, and I'm also the energy manager for the town, and I think I'm uniquely qualified to speak to the town about what you'd be losing by taking the director of facilities off of the committee. I started this job in September, and I can tell you in the time since September that I've started, that the number of times that I've heard Eric have a question posed to him that had to do with building or HVAC systems or anything mechanical, the number of times that he's told me, "I don't know," is zero. So I think that his expertise is invaluable to the town, and they should appreciate having that as an asset, and I think that removing that asset from the committee would be cutting your nose despite your face. And as somebody who sees this day in and day out, I wanted to offer you my firsthand experience of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Ma'am?
Alexis Christopher, 435 Captain Ames. I would be the other member of, of the committee, and I'm-
I think Jacob already got your, he knows where you're going to be.
Oh, yes. But I'd like to point out that we've been doing, we all took the ethics test before we joined this committee, and I don't think there are that many committees in town where they put in the bylaw that they have to be, A, a registered voter, and B, a non-town employee. I've asked a lot of questions in the last couple of weeks about that, and I was really surprised that it's just this committee. But I'm surprised that Julie, you couldn't find, that Julie could not find the minutes because I know they're being posted and they're being written. And I'd like to point out that we've only had one individual from town come to any of our meetings, and he came twice. He asked some very good questions. We would be more than, we would love to have people come and listen to us and see what we're doing. And as far as going back from seven to five, we came here last year and asked to be increased because of the workload we had, and we specifically asked for the director of facilities because of the information we needed every single meeting. And if we, if we don't have that, it's going, we're not going to be able to process the amount of data we get in the period of time we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Hana, just a quick-
I thought you were going to get the last word, Jim.
No, I didn't. I got it, I got it behind me.
Joel gets the last word.
I waited, but he finally showed up. Being, being involved in government for quite a while, I do see a weakness that we have in town. We don't focus on a, on a, an operation book, operation book, where people actually sign up because of their profession and not necessarily choosing a particular committee, but if they do, they can. And we have a library full of it, and we have someone in, in the town that controls it. We've got poor, the poor town manager out here running about 17 committees, when indeed here I'd be running the town and not the committees because that sort of focuses down. But I, I do believe we have to look at that because the conflict of interest business is getting serious now that we have Charlie Baker as the, as the governor. He's going to change that, clean out the Democratic Home Offices. But nevertheless, nevertheless, we've got to pay attention to it, and I think we can, and we've got a great, great crew moving, and we'll, the town will just apostle with that when you have 17 people on the committee, and all committees will follow. It's great. Thank you.
Last comment, Mr. Arbaitman.
Hi, Joel Arbaitman, Woodridge Lane. It's my understanding, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that our town charter requires the town manager to generate a capital plan.
That is correct.
And then we start talking about conflicts of interest. Well, the, there's no conflict. We, we told them, "You darn well better do it. That's your job." And then I listened to the, the folks on the volunteers that we have on the Capital Planning Committee, or whatever its title is, and I didn't hear from them a concern that they were being pushed around by town management, that they were being ganged up on, that the independent voices of these volunteers were being overshadowed by a tyrant coming out of the, the town manager's office. I heard that they value the input that they get. And then all of that goes at some point to the, to the FinCom. We've got people here supposedly representing the best financial interests of the town, and they look over everything. If they see problems, I don't think any of them is a shy person. They're going to speak out and say, "We have some concerns here." These are not insiders with a, with a conflict of interest agenda. These are people who are the check and balance. And then, even if we don't like what they do, all of that stuff comes back to town meeting, and there have been all kinds of hearings and forums, and, and an opportunity for every, all of us, we don't show up very well, but we could, to be heard on this stuff. And I haven't seen indications that there is tyranny or a lack of transparency. I see that we have numerous checks and balances with an opportunity for citizens to participate. So while I really do appreciate the importance of a good check and balance system, I'm not sure that this one is not already in place. So I would oppose this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Arbaitman, and Mr. Skaby has asked for a brief moment.
If you'd just indulge me for a minute, just because apparently my integrity's been challenged, but I think it's important to note, I won't cover the charter because it's very specific that the town manager has responsibility for putting the town's capital plan together. This body voted a year ago to make the changes to establish a committee as it exists today. But notwithstanding that, just so there's, there's truth in advertising here in some of the questions the proponent asked to DOR about the makeup of a committee, and what they had to say is that it varies across the state, with some communities appointing a committee consisting largely of citizens rather than employees, and others relying more on the paid municipal staff or a combination of the two. Either way, the idea is to establish a committee that is qualified to gather the most relevant and objective data on what the community needs are and the best, best methods for addressing those. When I got here, there was no capital improvement committee stood up. It just sat there in the bylaw dormant for years. And I was the one that asked the Board of Selectmen to please get the capital improvement committee started again, again, to assist me in establishing a capital program for this community, which at the time did not include the schools at all. And that was an important part of our capital plan, to bring the schools in, and so we did that. Now, I'm appointed by the Board of Selectmen to sit on this committee, but as Jacob mentioned on the first night of town meeting, not just being the town manager, but I've owned my own construction company, I've owned my own electrical contracting business, I'm licensed in the state, and bring to this committee more than just my role as the town manager, but an understanding of the, the structure and the building of a robust capital plan and coming up with the funding mechanism to execute it. And all that I ask is that we get held accountable to what we told this body we would do with our capital plan, and we have followed through that to the letter in FY15. If we don't do that in the future, then by all rights, change us up and, and, you know, call us on the carpet for it, but at this point, what I ask is let us be judged on what we have done, not what's happened in the past, and continue to move our capital program forward in, in a manner which is fitting to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skaby. On the Finance Committee's recommendation, the town vote in- On the Finance Committee's recommendation, the town vote not to approve Article 24. So just to be clear, if you vote yes, you're against Article 24. If you vote no, you're for it, which is backwards. Everyone clear? Yes means it's defeated. No means it's not necessarily defeated. Everyone clear on that? Yes means no.
One more time.
One more time. It's a negative motion. Normally, they're positive motions, meaning someone or something is asking you to approve something. The Finance Committee's recommendation, which was made and seconded, is to not approve this motion, this article. So success, passage of this article, means it won't be approved. So if you want to defeat this article, you vote yes. If you don't want to defeat this article, you vote no. Clear?
Clear.
Excellent. On the Finance Committee's recommend, motion to, on the motion made to not approve Article 24, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Opposed. That passes, but not unanimously. Now on to the other 35 things we have to do. Just kidding, it was a joke, folks. There be no further business. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve. Is there a second? All in favor? See you in the fall. Don't forget to vote next week.